I'm going to call the meeting of the planning board on August 12th to order. We'll take a roll call vote. Mary Foley.
Here.
Peter Morton.
Here.
Sue Philbert's here.
Ms. Almond's here.
Gordon Rooster's here.
Laura here. Sarah?
Here, sort of.
Sort of good enough for us. So everybody knows Mark Resnick is sick. He's going to try and log on, but I just spoke with him a bit ago. I'm not very optimistic. Doesn't sound good. So I would like to do the approval not required first. Is the applicant here?
Hi. I'm Bob Griffin here on behalf of Mr. Palazola, the applicant. And this is really just a very simple lot line adjustment between Greenbelt and Mr. Palazola. The Greenbelt parcel comes down here and we're going to take seventeen thousand nine thirty-eight square feet out of their parcel, put it up to the Palazola parcel. Palazola owns these two parcels here. We're taking the equivalent area and giving it to Greenbelt. That's really all we're doing.
So you're just swapping land?
That's exactly right.
Not making any buildable lots?
Correct. It's all even steven.
Great. Any questions from the board?
I would like, yeah, just just touch slower. It's like going later.
So Greenbelt owns this relatively large parcel here. It's fourteen point nine four.
Yellow portion right there?
It does include the yellow portion. So the yellow portion is going to be transferred to the Palazola ownership. Palazola owns this parcel and this parcel. So out of this middle skinny parcel here, I'm going to take eight thousand three hundred square feet out of this larger parcel here. We're going to take another nine thousand six hundred. These add up to the same amount of area that was conveyed from Greenbelt. So that's why I say it's an even steven land swap. So these two parcels go to Greenbelt, this parcel goes to Palazola.
Harry concerns that front league jacks, that's.
No, Mr. Palazola already has a house here and certainly makes his lot a little larger than his, you know, but again, if you combine his lot, his land, this parcel and this parcel together, it's again even steven. So he loses some, he gets it back.
Is there, so this is the Greenbelt plan, is that right?
What is Greenbelt?
Essex County Greenbelt Association, Inc.
Okay, and so that's a public land trust. Is there public access provided to this Greenbelt tract anywhere? Is there anything about that that's changing?
I'm not aware of how Greenbelt's managing their property, but generally they do let the public onto their land. There is nothing here that would affect their access or how they manage their land, as far as I know.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I just, just.
I was only going to ask if Mark had had a chance to look at this, as the planner.
Yes.
For today.
Yes, he and I met last Friday.
Okay.
And he said that it was just basically a swap, no new buildable lots, no change in access from the road. No issues regarding the public way. So he felt comfortable with it.
Okay.
I don't want to speak for him, but that's.
I think you just asked Andy my question. It's just a simple exchange of properties.
Yes, that's correct. I'm now here.
Okay.
So you said exactly what we discussed and then furthermore, I also spoke with the soon to be new director who's the person in charge of land for Greenbelt, Chris, I think it's La Pointe and yeah, and they're just just doing a land swap to address some encroachment from landscaping and a small, and some stone walls of fences. So that's, that's the entire purpose of this.
So that's, I think that's, this is agreeable to both parties.
So this is Sarah. Sue?
Yes.
Um, that was my question is that, do we have any documentation that it's okay, that it's both landowners are in agreement? That's the first question. And then the second question, second comment, I guess, is to Gail. I will be abstaining from this because I'm on the board of Greenbelt.
We have an application that's signed by both parts.
Okay, thank you. I can't see it on my end, so thank you.
If this has to be submitted to registry of deeds and the property lines change with the different areas, do they have to go through the normal procedures?
Yes, that's exactly right. So this plan would be reported at the registry of deeds and then a deed which referencing that plan would be executed between the two parties to make the conveyance is complete.
Okay.
Sarah, anything else? Anything else from the board?
Let me go one second. Typically, we endorse these on the condition that it's not an approval of any zoning approval.
That's correct. In fact, that language is on the plan already.
Or wetlands.
He says wetlands.
Planning board endorsement is that certified compliance of zoning bylaws and over here is that wetlands may exist on the parcels and all official verification of any wetlands.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, I'm going to move that we endorse the approval not required plan. Hope we get all these references right. Based on a survey prepared by the blank survey associates. Twenty twenty-four. For a land swap, land between Thomas Palazola, twenty-five parcel, and the Essex County Greenbelt.
Third second.
Second.
Any further discussion with the board? You ready to vote? Mary?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sir abstains.
Thank you, Chris. So Gail, since Sarah abstained, how we can sign that document so that I can sign, is that right? Or can Sarah still sign, either of the exchange?
I need to check with town council. She's not, she hasn't voted and the abstention will be noted in the decision, but I think as chair, she can sign that the board moved that forward and the decision will state that she abstained. I think she's okay.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay.
Sue, you have to.
I'm sorry, Karen, but we, Lincoln, you didn't open up the meeting for additional comments that weren't on the agenda and I wanted to see if I could do that.
We're going to do that at the end.
All right.
But I will allow comment after each of the hearings separately.
Okay.
That helps.
Okay.
So I'd like to move on to the continued public hearing for cell signaling. If I could have a motion to reopen the hearing that was continued from our last meeting on their application for a special permit.
So.
We have a vote. Mary?
Yes.
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 Sarah? Great. And now we need to do another roll call. Who's present for the hearing? Mary Foley.
Here.
Peter Morton. Here, Sue Philbert.
I'm here.
Chris Holley.
Gordon Rooster here.
There, Penny. Sarah?
Here.
Great.
Should we get the applicants or?
Yes, where's yet? Thanks.
Just to flag to, this is Adrian Kirkton from Weston and Sampson. We're also online with my colleague Doug Ossler. We touched base with Mark this morning and not last week, so just wanted to flag, we're on the call as well.
Maybe we could start with Weston Sampson on their comments on the.
Do you want to do the public hearing?
We opened.
Thank you.
We opened in your.
Let's check.
And sorry, just to make sure I heard you correctly, you were asking for Weston Sampson, just to summarize the open comments we have.
Right, your most recent memo that we received today.
Yep, yeah, no, we had emailed. I guess there's a few different things that we received last week from the applicant. Just going back to our original July memo. One was additional information from Hancock Associates on the temporary facilities. That was just limited to item four point eight, which is limits of clearing, so that we were comfortable with the information that ours provided. That no additional clearing would be done for the temporary facilities. We did get the link. There's a YouTube link for that under item six point one of the view. So I know that has been a comment and concern from the planning board. We do have an additional rendering from the applicant. They've indicated that their review is not showing that the building would be visible, that they have adequate screening with evergreen trees. The rendering is just from two different locations, so it's not obviously the entire stretch of one twenty-eight. So it's relying on information from the applicant, but they did provide a YouTube video of additional information. And then I don't know if Mark, you want to just flag, because we did get some additional conditions that might have changed sort of from the morning to this afternoon. But I could speak to some of the sidewalk discussions.
Which Mark are you?
Oh, sorry, Mark Resnick.
Are you, Mark Resnick, are you able to go through those conditions?
Yeah, yeah, I'm here. Is, I think you may want to have the applicant here to discuss the conditions.
Can we go back? What document are we talking about?
So.
I'm just asking what document you're talking about.
So this afternoon, late afternoon, we received proposed conditions from the applicant, which we mailed to us late this afternoon, so you may not have seen it.
So, okay, so I had responded that I assumed this was on next week, next meeting's agenda, since we haven't had time to review.
We'll continue to discuss it.
Okay.
Do you have an objection to continuing?
Well, just that we just got it a half hour before the meeting, so I mean, we can, I'm sure brush over it, but I haven't had a chance to review it. And if we could get a link to the YouTube video, that would be good as well.
If I may?
Yes.
So I did send everybody, I sent Mark the link to the YouTube video for distribution. I also sent, we didn't get the proposed conditions until late Sunday afternoon yesterday, so.
No, and I, that's fine. I'm just saying that we at the board need time to review it and we never got the original, so if we could get the original as well, that would be good. This is just the first we're seeing it.
Okay, and I did, because it's difficult sometimes discussing the written materials without having them in front of you, I did make hard copies of the conditions with the exhibits for distribution of the planning board, if you'd like.
That would be great. Thank you, Mark.
Well, they are.
You're welcome. Now, where do you?
If it is helpful, we could provide some commentary related to the traffic engineer's comments last week related to Atwater Ave.
Why don't we let Mark Lovsky go through the conditions first?
Okay, sure.
Sure, I'd be happy to. First of all, late this afternoon, I realized that the finance committee had actually also suggested a condition that's not included. And so that's an additional condition that we'd be happy to comply with. And that condition came in an email and it was that cell signaling is all planned in consultation with police and fire chiefs to train all public safety personnel on the features and layout of the buildings to prepare them for any type of public safety response that may be needed. And that is something that's done with Beverly and Danvers as well by cell signaling, so that that could well be a condition. And the finance committee did urge you to incorporate that when it reviewed the fiscal impact step.
Yes.
And so in addition to that, what you received from me in response to what I got yesterday from Mark Resnick is a list of conditions that we think would be appropriate in response to what we've heard. And I'm going to go through them very quickly. If there's anything in particular that needs to be discussed, we can go back to it or we can stop in each condition, however you prefer to do it.
I don't keep going through them one by one. And I'd like to give Mark Resnick a chance to respond first before you from the board.
Sure. And before I get started, I should introduce Brian Gudrow, who's taken Matt Connor's place. Matt is no longer with Hancock. Brian is now the engineer from Hancock who's primarily responsible for this project, so Brian's caught up and he's here with us tonight. The others that are here tonight are Chris Combs, Peter Gudow, Charlie Ware from Hancock, and Greg Keller somewhere behind me. Oh, there you are. And on virtual, virtually tonight is Sam Faboreo from TEC. So we will collectively present the conditions. The first condition deals with Mark Resnick's suggestion that we pay for a third party to inspect on behalf of the planning board. And in response to that suggestion, we reminded the planning board that this project is a controlled construction project. And Greg Keller, if you would like, will explain how controlled construction works. And we will be complying with the controlled construction requirements. And obviously, the building inspector will be supervising the process. But Greg, could you give a little input?
Yeah, sure. Greg Keller with concrete construction. Most commercial properties, anything over thirty-five thousand cubic feet, require what they call a registered design professional, which is a licensed architect engineer who oversees the design and construction of a property. They're licensed in the state of Massachusetts and they have very specific requirements, both to meet all of the relevant codes and to verify that the work going in place doesn't need meet the design intent of their drawings. And at the end of the project, at the beginning of the project, they provide an affidavit that says all of their design meets the Massachusetts State Building Code. They submit that for permit. It's a requirement for permit. And then at the end of the project, they do the same. They submit affidavits to the, to the town that says the, the construction occurred in accordance with our plans and all applicable codes. So that's what controlled construction is, a professional design engineer who oversees the project and design.
So, so that's, that's why we modified condition number one and obviously, between now and the next meeting, you can discuss that. And if there's anything additional that's required, please listen. The second condition dealt.
If you could just hold on one second, Mark Resnick, did you want to chime in on condition one?
Well, I still think there should be some site inspections by our engineer, just as the building department still does. Even though there's an affidavit, they still do electrical and fire department does fire code inspections and the building inspector does his inspections and plumbing. So I still believe there should be some sort of schedule of site inspections done for for the, the installation of the drainage and some of the other significant site work.
Can I add something to that, too? Is there is there a schedule of special inspections being listed? There's no document said the structural engineer is going to be doing this or are going out there. Is there a list of special inspections for geotechnical, for everything to kind of answer what Mark was just bringing up?
There is. It has not been established for any building components. It's quite lengthy. You know, just an overview, or let's just take structural as a, as a small aspect. Not only does a structural engineer have to design, he also, and the owner pays for this, they also have to do a third party review of his design, a peer review, a peer review. So, so there's layers and then what happens is part of his responsibility, the structural engineer's responsibility, is he has to identify independent third-party testing for work that's going in. So the owner then hires a third-party independent testing agency who witnesses concrete placement, steel placement, anything that is required under the structural engineer's testing program. And, and so any work that goes in as third-party inspections, those inspection reports go to the structural engineer for reviewing.
So just trying to, actually, I'm actually trying to help you with the idea. The, the idea that there will be a eventual list when the building starts to go into real construction, there'll be a list of inspectors, when, who, what, where, when, and how, and the communication with with, this is a question, but they'll be, they'll be in communication with our, the town's inspectors as well.
Yes, without a doubt. Even, even simple things like civil, the DPW usually has their own inspection program when we're putting in water or sewer, they want to be there for testing, third-party testing agencies for chlorination and pressure. So that's pretty standard operating procedure. In the town, the, the town plumbing inspector will be, you know, have underground plumbing inspections. Very typical to residential, but it will be, it will be identified, you know, through the permitting process.
Okay, so that, that process is yet to happen, as.
Yes, that's what we.
I'm going to ask, if I may speak for Mark Resnick for a second here, the actual site that's worked, that's ongoing right now, I know it's just drilling and blasting and such, but eventually it's going to be spreading earth and doing stuff on the site, a lot of stuff on there. Do you have somebody on site observing that? If there's any compaction tests to be made?
We will.
Yeah.
We will. And that will be, first off, there's what we call construction administration, which Hancock has the responsibility of doing interval inspections. And then we will have a third-party inspecting agency that will do compaction testing proctors on the soils and inspecting grades and soil placement.
Mark, did that, did that meet what you were looking for, question?
Well, no, I understand what their process is, but just, just as they provide those testing results to the other town inspectors, those other town inspectors do observe and are there at various times, but there's nobody who's on the behalf of the town doing site inspections. So that's when oftentimes planning boards require that their consulting engineer or if they have, happen to have an inspector, because they do a lot of stuff, just come in and do periodic inspections and write a report on what they observe out at the site.
This is often the procedure in subdivision situations where the developer is constructing roads and sidewalks and utilities that are ultimately going to be the responsibility of the municipality. And so that's a little different. This is, in this case, the owner of the property is going to be responsible for all this stuff after completion of construction. So it's a little distinguishable, I think, from maybe situations that Mark may be referring to, I'm not sure.
No, you're, you're absolutely correct that for subdivisions, it's common practice for site development. Some towns do it and some towns don't. Those places I've been in, the major site elements, when they go in the ground are oftentimes observed by the town board's inspector or if the town has, or the board has an inspector just to, to ensure to, you know, like any other inspector, town inspector does.
Sarah Creighton, I see you have your hand up.
Thanks. I think there are two things here. One is the, the building itself and I, that would be under, it seems to me that's under controlled construction. I'm not sure if controlled construction extends to the site work. So I guess that's a question. And I think we're, I'm most concerned about the site work and the drainage being installed as designed. I think we reserve the right to have it inspected by a third party. And I think the question is, who's going to pay for that? We, the building itself, electrical, plumbing, all of that. It seems to me if there's additional inspectors needed beyond the building department or the plumber, plumbing inspector, those expenses are covered by the building permit fee, even though, so I would disagree with the condition proposed by the finance committee that additional permit review fees be required of cell signaling, at least for the building. But for the site work, this drainage in particular, and any compliance with any of these conditions on the road or, or off-site. It does seem that we should reserve the right to ensure that they are installed as designed. And I think that's consistent also with the idea of a performance bond, which is one of the later conditions. And thus, and then subsequently, it's released. We have to have some sort of validation that the site work is installed as, as we have permitted or, or a modification based on site conditions has been agreed. So I think there is some, probably Weston and Sampson work on the site issues that is outside of controlled, the controlled construction scope, but maybe you guys can clarify that for me.
Sarah, did you want clarification from Mark Lovsky and his team?
Or from whether the controlled construction extends to site work?
Did you get that? You're breaking up a little bit.
I, I understand your concern. I I I understand your concern. And I think that cell signaling would be prepared. To cover the cost of a third party review of those things that would be covered by the performance. If if required. No, no, I was gonna change the subject.
Just two quick questions. And I was, it's probably for our town planner. Who on the town side is overseeing the project in its entirety? If we have an inspector here and inspector there, who's overseeing the whole project? And then my second question is. Question slash comment is. I believe when the select board had discussions of not looking into having a full time building inspector. It was because we were going to have. Large projects pay for the inspection services. So I'm wondering why that. Changed and where that changed. So maybe that's a question to the select board, but so those are my two questions.
So. So yeah, the building department is responsible for the construction of the building. Which is why typically the planning board or the approving authority is responsible for overseeing the construction of the site. So oftentimes during site construction, there are conditions that require field modifications. You know, and so if you have an inspector who's familiar with what's been. Going into the site. You know, he can make. You know, judgment calls on what to do and. How to adjust whether to approve something or not. So. So that's why having an inspector and having the cost paid for by the applicant and we don't need to be there. Well, let's say, for example, while they're spreading loam over some landscaping or while they're planting bushes, but while they're. Installing catch basins or they have a trench open and they have pipe in the ground to observe that. You know, those types of things are typically what's observed and usually they do a weekly construction inspection or. When when active site work is is going on or the drainage is being installed. And so that's kind of the the control over construction of the site while the building department does the building.
That wasn't what I expected to hear. The planning board is responsible for construction observation or administration. That doesn't seem right to me. There may be a third party inspection that reports to the town. And the building inspector, typically the building department. Has within its review of the building permit. Touches base with all the other departments and need to sign off prior to the building inspector sign off on the building permit and then same at closeout. So I just want to. I'm not trying to dispute what Mark said, but I want to clarify that I don't think the planning board is performing construction observation here. So there is a bond that's required, performance bond for site observation. And the site development is what's in the planning board's purview. And I think we just need to talk about what's the right scope of independent third party. Review and or testing to ensure that the. Contract documents are fulfilled. And what are that DPW or however DPW wants to manage and.
With respect to the site. The site work of both the bulk of the site works also covered by the order of conditions that the conservation commission issued. And they are going to be policing that during the course of construction because ultimately we're going to need to obtain. Certificate of compliance from the conservation. So there are multi layers of inspection here.
Agreed. I think on the certainly on the wetlands production and buffering wetlands and so forth, CONCOM is. Is that is within jurisdiction. I think we're also talking about site utilities and. Ensuring that, you know, that the utilities are performed correctly. Has the DPW?
Be supervised by the DPW.
Yeah, okay. So have they have they, I don't mean. Just any question of if Chuck has has weighed in on how he thinks that this inspection or process should happen.
Well, we've had regular meetings with Chuck and did copy him on all this today. We anticipate that he will be inspecting those things. I don't know what more we can say at this point, but I think what need to do between now and the next meeting is confirm all this. And determine if you're satisfied, you've got a comfort level. We don't, we're not trying to avoid scrutiny. We just don't want to create extra work and extra fees.
Here's have a follow to that. I would request that we ask the DPW director and the building inspector to our next meeting so we can get a clear understanding. Who's inspecting what.
Mark, did you want to?
Okay.
Talk. Mark Resnick. A bit about your conversation with EPW now, or do you want to wait until we get a little bit further along on the condition?
I think you. Probably want to talk about that when we get to the appropriate condition. But yes, I did meet with Chuck. Last week about. Much of the the work and we didn't discuss like onsite inspections. So that's. A conversation I'm going to have to follow up with him. To see what they're willing to do as far as onsite inspections of site work. I don't believe that they anticipated they would do that, but I can certainly have that conversation with them.
Any other comments from the board on this condition before we move on to the next one?
Good question. Are we asking Weston and Sampson to weigh in? Either now or later on how these conditions. On their opinions and how these conditions also might be achieved. If that's her peer review advice on that.
Yes. So I'm not sure they have seen these and have had. Chance to really respond.
They weren't copied.
Yeah, we do have, so yeah, Mark had shared them with us. Yeah, certainly our contract with the town is for the planning board's assistance and technical review includes. Site plan, special permits. From the plant phase as well as the construction phase as needed and desired and requested by the planning board. So certainly we can support the town if that's desired, but certainly other town. Departments of GPW or others are going to be reviewing stormwater controls and erosion controls and the like. We don't. Need to be on site during construction. So it's, yeah, it's really up to the planning board on that first condition. And the level of comfort. But yeah, I think as Mark mentioned, the most we'd do there would be weekly. For. Active construction and site civil work, but again, it's at the direction of the town.
Did you have a chance to? Review these so that you're comfortable commenting on them today?
We have. Seen them. I mean, it was just today that we saw the initial comment. So we have like in depth. Overdue, but we do, some of them are tied to the applicant's information that was provided last week, specifically on Atwater Ave. And School Street and the roadway improvements. So we do have our traffic engineers so we can. Respond to questions from the board related to those items.
I guess I'm trying to figure out if you would be more comfortable. Waiting till our next hearing to respond before our next hearing? Or are you comfortable weighing in today?
It it may still be useful to, I mean, there's. There's fourteen conditions. I mean, if the board was open to it, it would be. Good to just talk through them and the ones that are are clear and resolved, we can. Move forward with those, but if there are ones that require more technical review, those could be continued. Just so we do have enough time to weigh in if there's still open technical questions. Not that way we'd make progress tonight.
Does that seem agreeable to the board?
Yes.
Why don't we go on to number two then? That starts out hours of construction.
And in this vein, I think that some of the members of public who were here tonight may be here because of the blasting question. And I don't know, I think that's actually, and rather than. Ask them to sit through fourteen divisions, perhaps we could take a break from this. It's somewhat related to hours of construction. And talk about the blasting questions that come up. So that maybe if people don't want to spend their entire night here, they could hear what they came to hear. Is that, would that be okay?
Is that agreeable to the board?
Yes.
So I think to to start this discussion off, I would reintroduce Greg Keller from Columbia. Who was supervising the blasting and who's been intimately involved and. He can perhaps explain what's happened to date, what's anticipated and. I know the fire chief is here as well, so plenty of people know more about blasting than I do. I'm going to set aside.
As you all know, we are starting blasting procedures at the site. We anticipate a blast every day. A blast is usually, we drill anywhere from twenty four to fifty holes. And very controlled, usually about three thousand square feet per day. It's one blast that lasts all of a millisecond. We usually spend, you know, two days to set up for one blast. It's very controlled. It's not wide open blasting. All blasting is covered by. Series of mats. Actually, we're double covering mats. It's supervised anytime explosives are on site. The fire department has a detail on site. We are required by law and code to give permitting. The fire department's issued a permit. And there is a blasting plan that meets all of the. Requirements in the state of Massachusetts. We've set up seismometers according to. The code, which is anywhere within two hundred fifty feet of the blasting area. And we've actually set up remote seismometers over on Mill Street and up on School Street. Just to verify the level of vibration that anyone could be feeling at any time. We're well within the parameters of the criteria for blasting. Chief, you're the authority having jurisdiction.
Yeah, so a little bit, I think there's been some conversation about the permitting process. So basically, the way the permitting process works on the fire department side, we review a detailed blasting plan. We look at pass actions on the blaster or blasting company. We look at, you know, obviously valid licenses, et cetera. The one thing that does tie back to our bylaws, if they're moving more than two hundred fifty cubic yards of fill, then that triggers a planning board review of the. Blasting permit, which they're leaving everything on site, that does not trigger that. Our details been up there. I get a daily blasting report from not only just the blaster itself, but each of the. Devices that are monitoring the vibrations and sound. None of those have, some have triggered, which a trigger doesn't mean that it's outside of the acceptable range. It just means it acts, the device sends something. So it's important to remember that the devices are kind of calibrated, so. They're, they're not going to just catch a vehicle driving down the road and trigger. So there's a lower threshold for the trigger and there's a higher threshold for the trigger. I think as of this point, point one has been the highest trigger we've had. Two weeks-ish, maybe a little bit longer. And the safety threshold starts at point five. So we're well below what there is. Myself or other firefighters have also been on Mill Street pretty much every single day that they've been blasting since complaints have been coming up. And monitoring kind of the conditions on Mill Street as well, that nothing is kind of out of the ordinary.
Were we here from the public in terms of word?
There's, I have some questions. So, and thank you, chief. I got the blasting permit this afternoon. Just I guess a housekeeping question. It says for eight water, eight, eight, eight. And I know our application is for two Atwater Ave. So is the blasting happening at the map site?
So blasting's happening at two. However, our systems hadn't updated with the assessor's database with a new address. So the closest address we had to the permit was eight. So that's why it has eight and it has been, once the assessor's database connects with our database, you don't have any address in our system. Yet, that's why it is state.
So is that, I mean, the state allows that to have an impact?
Yeah, so we have a note on the permits, the blasting, and the blasting detail has a map.
And then you mentioned the two hundred fifty cubic yards, which is our, for our general bylaw. And we think within the last three years. A resident petitioned to have that new section for blasting added to that. I don't know that it was specifically requested to add to earth removal because the blasting portion is a little. Doesn't really match up with the earth removal part. They're kind of separate things. I don't know that the bylaw reads. If then, how type of thing. So. It, and it definitely doesn't read that it has to be two hundred and fifty cubic yards removed. From the blasting. It's just if the two hundred fifty cubic yards is going to be removed from the site. So I guess I would just want to verify with cell signaling that with the. Roughly two acres of trees and shrub that you're removing and things like that, the soils. You don't think you'll be. Any of your construction removing two hundred fifty cubic yards? And then my only other. Comment with that is that our general. Bylaw blasting hours are different than our construction hours. So when we get back to that. The conditions. We'll have to talk about the hours. They don't match up and and there's no wiggle room in general bylaws for. Hours, construction hours. And I am curious to hear from residents because I know there's been a lot of concern with. The blasting and. The vibrations and integrity of homes. And so I think people were hoping that. That general bylaw would kick in because they would have been notified. A quarter of a mile and so more people would have been aware of what's going on. So maybe we can get some feedback from the residents and understand what their concerns are.
Anyone else from the board before we take public comment?
I just have a couple of logistic questions regarding the blasting. So. The area where you're blasting and you are blasting currently, is it, as it sits on the site, is it? Are you beginning with those blasts that are closest to Mill Street and working away from it? Is there a strategy around that? Or is, does it? What is your, what is your plan there? And my, my question is because if you're ending up closer to Mill Street, does that mean that the intensity of the blast will increase as you go?
That's a good question. It is not linear. Blasting is is in our form, it's actually computer generated. So you're always looking for a relief point of blasting. So the early blast that we did were test blasts the first week. There was no relief. We're. Essentially blasting straight down the ground. As we start to work into the cliff. Now, all of that energy has a releasing to move, move sideways. There is, all the blasting that has taken place so far has been on the lower area. And we've created relief for that lower area. We're actually moving next week to start the drilling in the upper area. Now, the upper area. Will have two different types of blasting technique. One will be literally. One will be literally drilling every two feet. Like if you go up on one twenty-eight, you'll see the scarified. Well, that relieves the rock and allows all that energy to push the rock away from what you're, you're remaining. So that you'll have some vibration, but not nearly if you're directly in the ground. There is a little bit of, of blasting, it has to happen in the, what we call the upper meadow area. But that will also have relief and it's very, very shallow, uh, like five feet at the most. Uh, then there's, there's one other area that requires blasting that's probably closest to the residence, and that is probably a couple of days of blasting for the water line that's in the, in the, uh, the roadway, the brick roadway along the, uh, southern side.
So if I understand that correctly, and I'm, science is not my science suit here, but is that, it sounds to me like as you go on, you relieve pressure, which means that the vibrations could be less on Mill Street. Am I hearing that correctly?
It could be, but I, I don't anticipate, I think where we're, why we did a week of test blasting is to see, you know, size of charge, how the rock breaks, et cetera, et cetera. So I would anticipate that the level that we're achieving right now will be pretty static going, going forward. You know, you may have one or two that has, you know, a, a different vibration signal, but you also may have some that are, are negative, so rock is an interesting thing, and that's why I have experts.
Okay, thank you.
Not from the board. Mark Resnick, do you wanna comment on this issue before I take public comment?
Uh, no, I think, uh, they've explained what they're doing quite clearly, so.
Um, so I can tell that people are tuned in, there are quite a few people in the room, and there are also quite a few people online. Um, and I want to give everyone a chance to be heard who wants to speak. So I'm gonna have to ask folks to be concise and efficient um, and keep it to a couple minutes, so that everyone does get a chance to be heard. Um, so we'll start, I think, with the folks in the room. Um, if you wanna just raise your hand if you'd like to be heard.
Karen Bennett, yeah, Karen Bennett, twenty-eight Lincoln Street. Um, I am questioning, are there any plans to look at the homes that are close to um, the site? Because when we built the high school, all the homes that have flooded the high school had damaged, and the town ended up having to settle with those folks. So are, is there any plans to put structural engineers into the homes that are closest to, to see what their damage is before and after? With the high school, what they did is, they didn't send them before, they sent them after the fact. And they were at our houses for like eight hours at a time. So I'm just curious, um, what are we doing to protect the homes and people in that area?
Anyone else, just raise your hand?
Oh, I'll start, John Abbott, thirteen Mill Street. Uh, been there for, uh, forty-eight years, and we have, gotta have a history of blasting in that area. Some of you may recall, and some of you may not. But it was pretty severe, uh, building up that, uh, gravel pit. And indeed, uh, our concerns at that time, uh, fell on deaf ears. And as a matter of fact, uh, I, I attended many, um, select persons meetings. And I was actually told once, well, that's just fist trucks going up one twenty-eight, which is a completely irresponsible answer from a public, uh, elected official. Uh, Sue Thorn was on that board at that time, and she came to our house and sat at our dining room table. A blaster went off, boom, and she said, oh yeah. And, you know, if you don't get out and into the houses, as Ms. Bennett said, you know, you don't know, you're working in the vacuum. Um, but one of the things that really bothers me, even though the bylaw may not be clear, is that we were never informed. Matter of fact, uh, I really didn't know that a blast was gonna happen, uh, until I saw the birds stuck flying in the air before, before it happened. And I said, oh, what, okay, then the blast. And it does shake the house, and I'm not close like Liz is and, and these other people. Um, it does shake, it does rattle, and, and it could be, it is traumatic to some people. Uh, it doesn't seem to bother me as much, but I'm sure that other people do, and it, we should know when it's gonna happen, and we should know the severity of it. Uh, so the communication here, um, has been lacking and, uh, should be improved on in some way to communicate with the neighbors when this is gonna happen and what the severity of it is. And the hours of it. Uh, you know, I'm an early riser, but that doesn't mean everybody is. And I know these, I think today was about quarter or twelve. I was in my cellar, and, oh, I mean, if I were a combat marine, I would have jumped under the table. So, this is not, uh, this is not a minor issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who is present in the room, could you just say your name and your address?
Sure, Jeff Conley, twenty-eight Mill Street, there on the corner from this. You mentioned before that we haven't gotten the closest yet to Mill Street that will be coming in in a couple weeks. Um, if we haven't gotten close, if we haven't gotten to that point yet, that's the closest. I had pictures fall off the wall on day two. So we're not there yet, what's, what's coming? You know, what's the, what's the severity that's coming? Because, I mean, the picture didn't break, landed on a carpet, it'll be healed. I, fire chief came over immediately, which was great. Um, and we, we had a good chat, but, um, it sounds like it's gonna get worse.
Excuse me, Sue, this is Gail.
Yes.
Um, I could not hear that last person who was speaking, and it would really be helpful if people stood up and projected, because the microphone is in the middle of the room. And when you're sitting on the back bench, can't hear you, sorry.
Thanks for that.
I don't know who spoke.
Okay, that was Jeff Conley, twelve Mill Street, I'm sorry, twenty-eight, I'm sorry.
It's good.
I live around the corner, so. Um, so as Gail said, in order to be recorded and picked up, Gail prepares the minutes. Um, so if you could stand up, um, then she'll be able to hear you, excuse me, and, um, make sure we get your comments correctly. Anybody else, uh, wanna speak who's in the room?
Um, can you, uh, sorry, Karen Bennett, twenty-eight Lincoln. Um, what are the blast, the drilling hours or construction hours in the bylaws? And the blasting in the bylaws? And, um, what hours are they for both of those? I don't think that's clear to everyone here. Um, and what the, what they're asking for is an exception on, in both categories.
Thank you, anybody else?
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, Keith Moore is seventy-one Forest Street. Uh, one, one question to the bylaws, in terms of the monitoring device, what's the procedure if that goes over the, the, uh, point five threshold?
Anybody else?
Ian Hogan, I'm at, uh, twenty-three Mill. And he had mentioned that so far.
Stand up, I'm really sorry.
So far that he'd only reached point one, was it? Oh, okay, is it going to go over that? Is it gonna go over point one, and how will we know?
I can't, first off, I'm, I'm not the licensed blaster, I'm speaking for our, our company. Uh, I will check with, with them, every blast is different. Uh, number of charges, uh, location, et cetera. Our goal has always been to stay within that threshold, that's why we do some of the test blasts to see and monitor all, all across. So, uh, I, as I said before, I can't guarantee, but our threshold is, is point five at any point, even at the, even at the closest.
I guess none of us wanna see it get to point five.
None of us.
So I, I just wanna clarify that we're not gonna go there. We're not gonna get to, we're not gonna get over point one. Because I felt it shake on Thursday, and it was pretty scary for us. And I, I guess our concern again is, what point are you going to keep it? Are you gonna try to keep it under point one?
We always endeavor to keep it as low as possible.
Okay, you endeavor to, but can you?
I, I, I can't guarantee it right now, but the state code requires us to stay under point five, but yeah.
The point five scares me. And I think everybody in this room.
There's, there's a lot of documentation out that we shared with the chief and with, with other people about even what point five is. Um, I, and again, I'm more than happy to share a lot of the documentation about how, how it's registered, what it feels like. What you feel in a house is different than if you're standing outside your house, because it's, it's sort of harmonic. And I will be the first to admit that if you're in your house, you feel a lot more than if you're standing next to it.
Well, I came up and talked to you, you're very kind, and you mentioned that. Um, but I guess there was one blast in particular, uh, I, most of them I've been okay with. There was one blast in particular, I believe it was Thursday, that, um, shook my house probably, was the one that had your paintings and stuff falling off. I'd like to know what that blast registered.
Okay, if you can give me the exact dates, chief has all the information. This, that's Thursday?
Look, I'm pretty sure it was Thursday.
Because that's, you know, the first week, and I think I explained this to you, was our test blasting to see how the wa, rock relieves, and they use different charges. Now that they have, uh, you know, a process going, we're, we're seeing the same values right now across the world. So, so we anticipate, we're not just gonna suddenly overcharge anything. So, and, and I, I wanna answer someone else's question. We do have a, a process, uh, and you'll see me after this, or, that we have a, a text alert that every day will text and give up like a forty.
I'm glad I made it. You don't know when they're happening, and then I realized that's what I heard today, the blast, and I didn't know what happened to my neighbor.
Okay, I will make sure, I, I don't know how to communicate it, but we'll make sure that, um, we communicate through a, a text, I think Liz, you're on, right?
But I know other people have tried to get on.
I, you, you're the only one who's, who's contacting me. Again, it's, our blaster notifies anybody who's on it to a text alert that will give you, it's usually about a forty-five minute uh, window, because you gotta set the charge, you gotta check the charges and all that. So every day, there is, yeah, it would, it would. Every day, there's an alert that goes out that says, you know, expect a blast that, that, you know, at water out at this time.
Within a forty-five minute.
Right, yes. So that you're prepared.
Can the data be made public daily?
It can be, yeah.
I mean, because if we're, if we're not home, if we're traveling, we're away, you know, we might not know to, to check our foundation or to look around.
Yeah, I, you know, it's, it's pretty technical, so, I mean, there's, there's, there's velocities, there's, you know, PPV, there's.
I think the number, I think the number is all we, we're kind of interested.
Yeah, you're just looking at the, the velocity, which is the, the point five, so, um, we can certainly publish that.
Agreed, yes.
So as a correction, just, uh, I pulled up, I, like I said, I get the reports every day and go through all of them to make sure nothing's even getting close to the point five. On Thursday, uh, which was in question, uh, it was, one was point two, the other, uh, four sensors, nothing triggered. Uh, so the highest was point two, I just went back through the, all of the, the reports. So that would make sense why Thursday, uh, was, was more significant. Can I answer a couple of questions before we get too, too far and only forget? Um, so house evals, um, anybody that.
Stand up to.
Yep, sorry. Uh, so for our house evaluations, or they call them pre-blast surveys, they're only required within two hundred and fifty feet. Uh, the contractor has gone out and offered them. Uh, only one resident has, um, accepted a pre-blast survey to this date, uh, within that.
That was an offer. But, no, it was offered, yeah.
So, so with the, offered as in, if you would ask for one, you would get. Let me rephrase, so, um, the notifications, we covered that with the text blasts, it's within a forty-five minute, uh, half hour to forty-five minute window, depending on, um, for the hours, well, obviously you'll clarify the hours. The only thing that is in the blasting, um, regulation of the permit applicant that was applied to me is that they were within a two hundred and fifty foot buffer of one twenty-eight, and there is a time constriction of ten to two. Uh, so that is in, uh, I allow. And then if the, it goes over the threshold, so somebody said, well, what happens if it gets to point five? So automatically by state law, uh, they have to notify me, and we also notify the state fire marshal's office, uh, to do an evaluation as well. So they come in, the state comes in basically, and, uh, puts a magnifying glass on, I think that. So that's kind of a process.
Just one more question, who watches the gas lines coming to our houses as well?
So the amount of vibrations going in that point five is well below anything that's gonna, any like water lines in the street, gas lines. Those aren't the things that, you know, even get close to that, you'd be three times that before that became an issue.
So how do we get the pre-blast survey?
Yeah.
How's that work?
There's a, there's a, uh, list going around, just put your address on there. And if it's a third party, we don't even control it, we'll contact the third party that will contact you and make the arrangements. You're here.
The pretty thing, there's even ten, twelve blasts. The pre-blast isn't really.
And I did, I think you were talking about me when you mentioned a resident getting a pre-blast survey, and I did. But that was, that wasn't before blasting began, I had asked for it and got it.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but we don't, all of us don't know who all of you are, so if you could just say your name.
Elizabeth Thomas, twenty-seven Mill Street.
Thank you, and stand up, thank you, I'm sorry.
Um, yeah, no, I just, I feel like you were talking about me, you know, that I was the resident that got the pre-blast survey. I do know Dr. Gurley also got one right after me. But pre-blast surveys are supposed to be before blasting begins, that's the pre-part. And mine didn't, wasn't done till ten blasts in. And if, if I'd gotten notification prior, which by the way, my notification was two strange men coming to my door at seven thirty in the morning knocking. One of them was at my door, the other one was already in my backyard, putting down a black case that I had no idea what it was. That was my notification, that's not okay. We deserve better than that. And I definitely deserve, and I live close enough that you wanted to put a seismograph on my property. So I live close enough that I should have gotten notification in, in advance. And I did get that pre-blast survey. But my neighbor, Jeff Conley, he also has a seismograph, and he didn't get that offer. So, I mean, to say there is a lack of communication is putting it extremely kindly, which I had actually sent all of you a letter earlier today, an email.
Nice thought.
And so that kind of broke down all of my concerns, because I really don't wanna be publicly speaking right now.
Well, your letter was very good.
Okay, that's much more my forte. I will shut down then.
Thank you for the time to write it. Does anybody else want to make?
Yeah, this is Josh Rogers, fifty, um, Josh Rogers, fifty-nine Forest Street. Um, it, this is not technically about blasting, but there's a lot of, you know, spray painted lines on our street now, and it seems like this is the beginning of a very big project. And I would just like to know what is the plan? What is the impact gonna be? So how, how would we know that?
That might be more appropriate for DPW, I'm not sure, do you wanna take the crack?
Uh, that is the extension of sewer and water lines that are going to be going from Summer Street up Forest Street, Mill Street, under one twenty-eight.
Okay.
Uh, that project was funded by a Massworks grant of three million, five hundred thousand dollars that was obtained by the town. And the work, as I understand it, is going to commence in September.
Okay.
And, and what I, what I further understand about that is that no blasting will be required on Forest Street and Mill Street, that the conditions are such.
Is that to support CST, or is that for some other reason?
It's, it's not only for CST, but it's for other properties in the limited commercial district. For instance, the new DPW headquarters is going to get water and sewer from that project.
Well, in general, I don't know who to direct this to. It would be nice if people would communicate what the plans are, they're gonna, you know, impact lives, swaths of residents, which sounds like for either months or maybe years.
I, I think that the, uh, town administrator does a pretty good job in that department, uh, he's not here.
He is, he's right, he's, he's on the screen behind you. Anxious to comment.
I didn't realize that, but, but generally Greg, uh, is pretty good in the cricket. I, I read it all the time, that he advises the community as to what's going on.
is pretty good in the cricket, I I read it all the time, that he advises the community as to what's going on.
Yes, we all gotta buy the cricket.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I read the cricket, but I I, there's a lot of people here tonight that don't know what's going on. So I'm not saying that's your issue, but.
That's that's a DPW question, and I think Chuck Dam is the best to address that.
Greg, did you want to, uh, add anything at this point?
So, um, you know, as 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 hard as we try to do communications, it's never enough, because there's always someone who hasn't heard. Um, but we will be giving notification, DPW will be notifying people directly um, along the path of those two pipes, um, as that time gets closer.
And how will that happen, and when will that happen?
So the project will likely begin, um, in in September sometime. Construction will actually begin at that point. Um, and there'll be notifications typically through door hangers. So there'll be door hangers, there'll be use of the, uh, road signs, you know, notifications. I'll continue to do updates on my blog, which you can get online. Um, and the DPW will be communicating, um, with with residents along the route.
Um, Dan Daley, uh, on Forest Street, right right next to my friend right there, but look at, uh, Forest Street is a dangerous street regardless of what they want to do digging up this road. The sidewalk is unpassable, it's not safe. This project should be going down another road, not Forest Street. I don't think anybody here wants that mess, and they'll be there, if he's starting in September, he won't be done through, probably, who knows when it'll be done, but it'll be a long time in my estimation.
Yeah, I had a question.
So Liz Thomas again.
That guy. Uh, um, so a couple of years ago, probably maybe three, four years ago.
Do not know who's talking.
Oh, I'm sorry, Elizabeth Thomas, twenty-seven Mill Street. Uh, I had spoken to the Board of Health, Ellen Lufkin, um, a couple of times over the years, asking if sewer would ever be an option on Mill Street. And I was, because I have septic and I would have loved having sewer. And, um, I was told at that time, I don't remember the specifics on it, but it wouldn't be a possibility because of our rock. It'd be a risk with ground groundwater and contamination, all of that, that it would never happen on Mill Street. And now it's happening. So why is it okay now? Why is it safe for us to have sewer running down Mill Street when it wasn't previously?
Anyone else want to make a comment on the blastings here?
I just, I just want to.
Stand up and get through this.
Mary Bannon, I'm twenty-five Mill Street, I'm right next to Liz. Um, how are you protecting our houses with this pre-blasting? You know, I couldn't, I contacted a surveyor and he said, you know, you're past the radius. But we're all worried about what, I just put new tile floors all through the house. I'm afraid of them cracking, you know? So how are we gonna register for this, uh, pre-blasting?
On the list you have right there.
So otherwise, you're gonna get one?
You will contact you, your choice.
Yeah, my choice is yes.
Excuse me, may I intervene? Hello?
Who, who, hello, who?
My name is Hannah Osborne, and I'm, I'm, uh.
I don't want to, um, cut you off, but I want to finish with the people who are in the room first.
Okay, it's just that I'm in Switzerland, which is, uh, right now it's one forty-five in the morning.
Oh, okay, all right.
If you don't mind. Can I interject?
Yes.
Okay, so as I said, my name is Hannah Osborne. Uh, I grew up on Ten Ledgewood Road. About forty years ago, my parents and my family, uh, were friends with Liz's parents and baby Liz Thomas. And, um, we went through hell because of the blasting on At Water Ave. Um, all of our health was impacted, our home was impacted. And I want to know why forty years later it's starting up again? Why is there blasting going on again on At Water Ave? Why are the people on Mill Street, Forest Street, Ledgewood Road, Summer Street, and all around School Street, why? Why are they being subjected to this again? Because forty plus years ago, my parents and Liz's parents, and I believe the gentleman who's seated to Liz's left, were all dealing with this. We went to court. There was, there, it 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 was horrific. And I want to know why this is happening again, why Liz Thomas, who would wake up screaming from the blasts, is now being subjected to this again as an adult?
And then just.
Hey, first one to that. Uh, I was there forty years ago too, and, uh, I was very much aware of what was going on at the Ford. And it was an entirely different kind of blasting operation. And it wasn't controlled the way this current project is being controlled. And I do understand that it it was out of control in the nineteen late seventies and eighties. And, uh, it shouldn't have been, and, uh, it's not, it it's not a problem that we're responsible for, and we're doing everything we can to make sure that the consequences of that kind of activity don't recur.
Anyone else, um, wants to make a comment who's here in the room? Um, I do want to give everyone a chance.
Final question, who do we contact if there's damage?
If there's damage, you, uh, there's a form that's on the fire department website that you can access. You and then it goes to me and the state fire marshals, and they come out and do an evaluation. Uh, it's gonna be done within thirty days of the damage, so.
And you need to have inspected before the blast to know whether the damage is from the blast. So if you haven't done preliminary examinations of all of the houses within beyond the two hundred and fifty yard or whatever radius. I mean, houses, Manchester and all of North Shore is built on ledge, it's built on granite. When you set off a blast, it sets off the equivalent of sound waves, okay? So, and it's not just releasing the sound waves that are that are impacting houses miles away. It's also releasing gases that have been trapped for millions of years in that rock. People around Herald Street and and Liz's mother, people have died of cancer. We cannot, after the fact, know that it was definitely that. But Heather Michaelowski, her mother and her father all had cancer. Mother died a year ago at fifty-one. Her father died the year we were graduating from high school, eighty-eight. Her mother had cancer while we were in high school. You cannot continue to let this blasting happen. It's it's, I'm going to use a bad word, I've been living in Switzerland for thirty-two years, and this is still affecting me. I left Manchester because of how I was treated, because of how my family was treated during that whole episode. And you're doing it again, and you're treating population like idiots, I'm sorry, but the guy who said it's all complicated, it's very complicated, no, it's not, it's vibrations, just like the ones that you're hearing right now.
Thank you for, um, taking the time to call in from Switzerland, I appreciate it.
One more word, forty years ago, the blasting was supposedly, wait a minute, no, let me finish, let me finish. Forty years ago, it was supposedly to put in a a strip mall or something like that, what is the excuse now? What is the excuse for blasting now? Are you really gonna put in some buildings this time? It's been forty years.
I'm sorry, but I I am gonna move on to other people who would like to speak. Um, there are several people, um, online with their hands raised. Uh, Greg, did you want to comment quickly before I go to other members of the public? Or was that a hand raised from before?
Um, tha- thank you, Susan, I would just comment that um, the water and sewer lines have been fully permitted, including conservation commission review. Um, so that the i- issues related to water and stream crossings, et cetera, have all been reviewed and and permitted, um, by the appropriate boards.
That's helpful, thank you. Um, so Lori Worth, I see your hands raised.
Thank you, um, yeah, I'm Lori Worth, I live at seventeen Mill Street. I have a couple of questions. Um, one is, is my house within the range, um, for which I would be eligible for a pre-blast survey? And if it is, I would like to have that done at my house. My next question is, um, I'd like to know about the damage to the houses, um, that was mentioned earlier by Ms. Bennett when the high school construction was done. What type of damage did the houses there, um, incur? And how is that mitigated by the town? And thirdly, I'd like to hear what risk, um, are we at in terms of our houses? Um, in terms of what kinds of damage we may experience from the blasting?
Thanks, anyone else, um, don't see any other hands raised? Uh, Liz, did you want to make one more comment, please stand up?
Elizabeth Thomas, twenty-seven Mill Street. Um, kind of wanted to connect what Karen had mentioned about the drilling on ledge and also what Hannah had mentioned with back in the eighties. So back in the eighties, I'm not, I'm not gonna lie, I don't remember any of it, I was a tiny baby and I really don't remember. But, um, I do know that that project, um, it stopped at blasting, it never went beyond that. So we never reached the drilling on ledge stage. And I know that the the high school area had a lot of significant damage, fireplaces and foundations and all sorts of problems, um, from drilling on ledge. Here, uh, Mill Street and in Forest Street, we're gonna have both. So we're getting the blasting now, soon it's gonna be transitioning over to drilling on ledge. That's a one-two punch on our homes. So, I'm not gonna lie, I'm the closest house. I'm worried, I'm very worried about how that's gonna play out, especially for the length of time that this is going on for. That's all.
Um, self signaling or chief, did either of you want to make any other comments? You know, based on what you.
Yeah, I mean, just in closing, um, you know, remember, I'm I'm an advocate for the residents, I I serve you as your fire chief. Um, so I'm constantly monitoring the blast, I do listen to concerns and not falling on deaf ears. Um, the safety margins that are imposed are because of things that happened in the eighties and those practices of severe damage to houses. Um, so those are things that we don't take lightly. Uh, we are monitoring them, and like I said, it's is as disruptive as it is, it's being done as safely as possible. I'm never gonna allow something that I feel is unsafe to affect one of the residents.
Sorry, or Joshua, fifty-nine fourth.
Um, does it make sense to stop the blasting till we do the pre-blast surveys so that people can get at least as appropriate a baseline as possible? That would be.
Yes, it does.
One question, second question would just be, what, so a a lot of statements that are fairly technical about how we're following regulations and that, I appreciate that. But my assumption is that regulations were followed when they built the high school, and it seems to have caused a lot of damage. We're not doing a lot of lessons learned about what happened with high school, and so that's a concern, I think, for everybody here. Um, but but I think pausing the blasting and getting a baseline so we can properly measure these things seems like it would be a reasonable thing. Even if I was running CST, I might want that, because you're opening yourself up to significant litigation.
Uh, Sarah?
Oh, I'd just like to clarify that the high school is a totally different project. Um, the issue there was compaction, we did not, there was no blasting at the high school.
Okay, thank you.
Mary? Um, I, thank you for saying that, because I was gonna try to throw that out there, what we could do with ensuring that the residents that want the pre-blast, not pre-blast now, but, um, a somewhat pre-blast survey done before further blasting happens. Um, and then I know the town administrator said that Concom reviewed for the sewer lines. Um, I think it would behoove the town and and or the board at this point to also get the board of health um, input on it since Elizabeth had mentioned that the board of health was the one that was saying that it couldn't happen in fire years. And then my third question is to CST and or the fire chief, um, is any blasting occurring within two hundred and fifty feet of one twenty-eight, because I know you would need to then get a permit from the Mast DOT. Um, and there's regulations that need to happen on the highway, I don't know if the vibrations can be felt on the highway, but I know they have that two hundred and fifty two requirement as well. So just wondering where that falls.
Yeah, um, the permit has been applied for, there is some minor blasting that happens within that two hundred and fifty foot perimeter, and so our blasting company has applied to the state for approval on that, the hours change. Uh, I think blasting is what between.
Tended to.
Tended to. Um, and and no blasting will occur until they receive that permit from the state.
Okay, and then you'll let the planning board know when that occurs?
Yeah, once, once, once the, uh, permit is issued, then we will schedule very specific times within that that timeframe that state allows.
And does the state, this is just from the state websites, did the state require that there's a pause on one twenty-eight of traffic during the blast?
They do what they call a roll rolling road block. So they'll just probably at one thirty-three, they'll they'll put a couple cruisers out, just sort of go slow. And they'll time it with with the blasting so that there are no cars in the immediate direction. But they they don't do a full shutdown.
So there's one more, um, person I didn't see online, and that's Sarah Pierce. Um, you wanna go ahead, Sarah?
Yes, thank you very much, Sarah Pierce, nine Friends Street. Um, so a couple of questions and a comment. It sounds like right now, um, you're in the preliminary stages of blasting, there's one blast being done per day. Sounds it's like it's in a forty-five minute block. When you start doing your actual avid construction, how many blasts will happen per day and what will the timeframe be? I'd also like to make a comment, um, I think as far as a resident, as I mentioned, I don't live on Mill Street, but there's been very little communication that any blasting in Manchester has been done. We have a flashing blinking light at the end of the highway that lets residents know about a festival by the sea. I think that would be more useful if we could let residents know that there's active blasting going on in our town just in case locations like the MAC or any other places need to be, uh, made aware of that. Um, I think that was it, but I I do really feel badly for the people that live in that immediate area, especially those that have gone through this in the past. And we don't really know, as you said, rock is an unknown area, whatever the, um, consultant had said. We don't really know what the impacts will be until the project starts. So those are my questions and comments, if we could get more.
Great, thank you. Um, and thank you all for taking the time to come and, um, let us know what's happening in your neighborhood and, um, you know, self signaling and achievement, we all, um, we're listening.
Is it possible just to get an answer on the blasting of what will happen when you're in your avid state of beyond the one per day, will it be all day blasting?
Oh, no, no, we are actually into production right now. And currently, it it appears that only one blast will occur per day.
Uh, and just so the other thing I forgot to mention, uh, is the area is secure and then by. And then by state law, we, uh, we, we ensure that the blaster sends out an air horn blast. A certain blast, uh, five minutes out, one minute out from the blast. And you can hear that at least two hundred and fifty feet. Once in a while, the wind's blowing correctly. I can hear it when I'm on Mill Street.
I heard that on my
But it's not, with Mill Street's, no, so far out of, I shouldn't say so far, removed from the blasting site, that even that air horn's very hard to hear depending, especially if the wind's blowing towards Essex. You're not gonna hear, um, that New York first thing, but it does go off the two hundred. So I have stood there, stopped in the highway, listened for it. So, hey, uh, it is following all the regulations.
Good question. What's the duration of the permit? How long is this going to go on for?
So my perm I issued is for three months. So real, if they have to go out, I think in September twenty eighth, though, I think sometime mid-September range, they have to reapply for an extension for that part.
Thank you, chief. I think we're going to move on to the rest of the self signaling hearing. Thank you again, everyone.
Thank you.
Because we might want to tell you want me to say something or because we got them all four two days and they make it long. We're not even gonna get
Yeah, I don't
Chris.
So you want to suggest that anything goes online, uh, to pre-blast for a range for just because there's a pad of paper here, but that's not good for them.
Just a good idea.
So those folks who are online, um, obviously couldn't sign the paper that's here. So if you are interested in the pre-blast survey, if you could let Mark Riznick know and he will pass that information on.
Sue, I'll have those papers in Town Hall tomorrow between nine and two.
Oh, great. Thank you, Gail. If people want to sign the physical paper, you can see Gail tomorrow between nine and two. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm in the assessor's office from nine to, nine to two.
Thank you. Um, buy-in, I think it's gonna be a bit.
Okay.
Uh, we'll try and run through the rest quickly. All right, um, we're on to number two. Hours of construction.
Okay. Uh, this is, uh, essentially what Mark Riznick had proposed. It's modified a little bit. I did add the sentence that said no blasting would occur earlier than eight. In, in fact, we don't anticipate blasting before ten.
It's important to make those changes, yeah.
Uh, other than that, I think it's fairly straightforward. I did, uh, Mark Riznick, at Peter Ordos' suggestion, uh, delete state holidays because there are some state holidays that, uh, that are observed without, uh, construction being followed.
I think this is probably one that the board is going to want to discuss, um, at our next hearing. Um, hours and scope.
That's fine. And, uh, now, in, in light of what Mary said about you're just having received this and, and the hour and others on the agenda, in spite of the fact that we were hoping to, to finish up in Sept- at the first meeting in September, it's apparent now that there, there may be need for another meeting or you're not averse to that. I think there's a lot to digest here and we could continue to go through it if you'd like. Uh, it's up to you, I
Um, well, let's discuss with the board. We had put a tentative meeting of August twenty-sixth. Um, you know, you know, it looks have already cleared. Not available, okay. Um, do you, how does the board feel about continuing our discussion or continuing
The hot, the hot button for the last couple of weeks has been item number three. Yeah, item number three, Atwater Avenue. If we could discuss that one. The other ones are all certificate of occupancy, home stuff just later down the road. This one is on hot button right now.
Uh, and, and, uh, we'd be happy to address that tonight.
And then we, then we can move away.
Then we've got Darren on the phone too, so it'll be good.
And, and we have Sam Rigorio on the call and Sam is, as you recall from TEC. Uh, he has provided a number of things, uh, as tools for this discussion. Uh, one is, uh, one is a look at, uh, Atwater Avenue. Yes, he's, uh, the, the measurements have been confirmed. You're welcome. So, uh, obviously, we're well aware of, of potential safety issues on Atwater Avenue. But as you could see from the plan that I just gave you, uh, and as you may recall from prior discussions, there are some real physical constraints with respect to Atwater Avenue that limit what can be done. However, uh, considering those constraints, uh, Sam has suggested three primary, uh, traffic calming measures. Uh, that self signaling, uh, would be happy to install and they're itemized in, uh, a sketch that was attached to, uh, this, these conditions that I gave you. And I, it, Sam, do you want to run through, uh, your traffic calming measures? And provide an explanation as to how you arrived to these measures?
Um, sure. I assume that everybody's looking at the graphics right now when I start talking, right? Before I go. I thought it's gonna be, oh, yes. Okay, so, uh, good evening, everybody. Once again, I'm sorry about light out behind me so it's less glaring. Um, so once again.
Which is what we got tonight, yes. Just give us one minute. Give us one minute.
I'll give you five. It's great.
Okay. Are you all set, Mary? Thank you.
Sam, while, while we're looking, this is Peter. How are you? Um, just a quick question. You're, um, the widths of the road that you have here, that's the existing width of the road?
Yes, so those are, there, it's twofold. So those are the widths of the roadway that are directly off the survey. So that's down to the exact measurement that the survey showed. And then, um, going through the measurements last Friday, um, I wa- walked out to Atwater Ave, I took a wheel out to, well, say the plus or minus of each of these locations with the orange crossbar going across. I might have been like a foot or two in each direction from it, it's because it's, I'm doing that based off a wheel as opposed to what the survey was. Uh, but from there, uh, I took a wheel measurement at each of those locations and got pretty much the exact same number. Again, some of them might have been an inch or two different just because I'm not in the exact same location um, as where the survey, those survey lines are. Um, but we, we were pretty, pretty accurate, uh, to where, uh, what the survey was. And so um, to, to just kind of outline what you're looking at, there's a blue line that runs across, uh, kind of the top of where the roadway is. That's the northern side of, uh, Atwater. Uh, there's a blue line to the south of that. Uh, you can kind of see the red on top of it. The red is the twenty-five foot offset from the north side. So that's just kind of giving you the indication of wherever the red is, south of the blue line there, that's right next to it. That means the roadway is less than twenty-five in that area. Um, and so I kind of highlighted out with that yellow marking well above the roadway that just kind of says, this is the general length of roadway. That's less than twenty-five. Uh, for that, there are, lot, there are locations on the roadway that are more than twenty-five. Um, but there are locations that are less, so the pavement just kind of goes in and out, um, a lot of it based on where the curvature is. And then on top of it, there's also the wetland lines, uh, which are the greens, and those are the flagged wetlands. Uh, so that's not even the buffer zone, obviously, the whole entire roadway is within the buffer zone. Um, just been based on the proximity where the water is. So, but that's kind of what you're looking at in the graphic. So, um, once you get about, oh, a hundred feet down the roadway, because the first hundred feet right from School Street is actually quite wide. Um, so just next to the farm stand, and then it narrows out once you get past the dumpsters uh, on the backside of the farm stand. And that's where basically that less than twenty-five starts and it continues for a lot of the roadway. Um, the wider part, and this isn't picked up necessarily on the, um, the, because each of these individual orange markers are about two hundred feet apart. That was the purpose of this. When you get around the guardrail area, which is right where the, the brook crosses in the culvert, there actually are a, a good amount of space in there that's more than twenty-five. Um, uh, but from there, the guardrail kind of blocks from there. So where, do you want me to go further? I know you guys are still
Excellent. Um, go ahead, Lori.
Just speak, just a general question. Your measurement is from edge of paved surface to edge of paved surface?
Yes, um, and that purposely because anything that's outside of that is considered, uh, right now, pervious land. So even, and there, it might be flattened, it might have some gravel in it, it might have attributes that allow there to be potentially roadway at some point. But it would be considered as pervious land, so any change to that area outside of what would be the actual edge of asphalt um, would trigger, um, obviously at that point, anything, uh, permitting to the wetlands and, uh, and such.
But that area outside of paved surface actually services drainage collection from the road, but does not?
Uh, somewhere.
Or not, it actually does do that.
I mean, the roadway right now is, um, uh, please, please say that again. I'm, I just want to make sure I understand what you just said.
The drainage from the roadway just goes into the, the soil or the, the, the natural
Uh, right, yes, right now, yes.
Okay, so it just goes
So there's no like stormwater treatment on the, or stormwater drainage system under Atwater? No, it's all runoff.
Mark Riznick, are you still with us? I know we had, uh, I guess not.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I'm here. Sorry.
Um, did you want to comment at this point, um, about needing for an Atwater Avenue? I know you had three thoughts on that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I still feel that it's, it's possible to build the sidewalk there. It may not be, um, it may require another level of permitting with Concom. I think at the very least, we ought to have, uh, some preliminary discussions with them on that because, yes, some areas will have, there will have to be additional impervious area, uh, in, installed, um, you know, and um, in order to get that. And in some areas, I mean, the sidewalk can get narrowed down to four feet, um, instead of five, um, and allows it for certain lengths, but, um, I, I still feel that, um, that would be the best way of addressing this. Um, and secondly, um, the last sentence referred to, um, traffic calming substantially set forth in Exhibit D, which calls for what appears to be like grooved rumble strips installed in the pavement. Um, some like couple of concerns with that. Obviously, I believe, um, Weston Sampson had some concerns with that, but the other concern I have is also related to just the condition of the asphalt there. Um, uh, so, um, and, uh, so, um, yeah.
So Darren, oh, I'm sorry, Mark.
No, I was just gonna say, well, other traffic calming or types of rumble strips should be considered as well. Um, so that's all.
Thank you. Uh, Darren, Weston and Sampson, do you want to comment on this right now?
Uh, if you'd like us to, certainly, we can, we received some of the information from the applicant last week. Um, we have some concerns about the application of a sidewalk. Uh, so we did a review that. We sent some information to the town this morning. I can run through. Um, some of the latest figures are, are new, so we, I think we can comment on, on all of it.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot, um.
Oh, no, that, that's fine. I mean, I guess, yeah, we can go through, I guess, the roadway width, um, as mentioned, um, from the edge of existing pavement to the wetland to the north. Um, most spaces was about twelve feet. Um, certainly, there is some complexity of building in that area. If we, if the town required a sidewalk, um, it is abutting, a wetland area, so there's, up to the Concom considerations Mark was raising, uh, would come into effect. Um, there are allowances in the stormwater handbook for bike and pedestrian paths, which the sidewalk may fall into, um, that might give some leniency to the applicant on stormwater controls. Um, and then I do have our traffic engineer on the call, so, um, we did look at some of the traffic calming measures, but I'll let Doug speak to those. Um, including the rumble strips and some of the other signage that was proposed.
That would be great, um, right on.
Hello, uh, yes, this is Doug Osser from Weston Sampson. I was the same traffic engineer that reviewed the, uh, previous traffic study. Um, what I was able to see and review was a basically two-page memo. I had one page worth of writing and then I had a figure. Um, from what I could see from the screen, the figure looked a little bit different, so um, bear with me, it's not the exact one that I was looking at. If you'd like, I can share the screen to show what I was looking at, um, but it's not necessarily required.
I don't think I can figure that out.
Okay, um, I'm not allowed to share my screen. It would have to be permission from you, so I'll, I'll just talk through it. It was referring to the memo, a memo dated, um, July. I'm sorry, let me scroll back up to see this. A memo dated July twenty-ninth, um, by Sam. Um, and it more or less talked about the desire that was propositioned to add a sidewalk and that the applicant, the traffic engineer, uh, feels that it wouldn't be too advantageous. Well, there's different things that was talked about, but most of it was if we kept it within the existing um, surface width that it is right now, it would narrow the lanes and you know, biking, bikers would not be able to pass each other and then it provided a, the figure that showed a few different, um, recommended uh, traffic calming measures and that included some signage, some pavement marking and the rumble strips that were already mentioned.
Think you might be able to share now.
All right, let me look into this. Press this button. Oh, that does look better. All right, just double check. Are you seeing my screen now?
Yes. Thanks, Laura.
So this is a figure that I'm referring to. Um, above is the um, but comments centering around four different, um, means for traffic calming that was posed for consideration. I'm not necessarily, all of them are proposed by the applicant. It wasn't a letter addressed to the applicant, so it'd be the applicant's proposal to the town, uh, which and where is included, uh, which could be just forwarded this. Um, the first one, I'll zoom in here so we can read them. Was to add a central line and shoulder line pavement markings, um, to establish lane lines. Uh, we definitely agree with that. It's usually always a good idea. Um, I recall in the June tenth meeting, there were concerns brought up about speeding along Atwater as well as cutting around corners so that they can go even faster. I'm adding in the lines, not only by slightly restricting things, it is a little bit psychological that people tend to travel a little bit slower when there are striped lines and is a calming method that is very commonly used. Um, the second one refers to shared use lane pavement markings. I'll shift over here. And it's referring to what's sometimes called the sheroes to indicate as biker, yes. And it's referring to what's sometimes called the sharos to indicate as biker, yes, you can. Bike here on, on, within the lane, as well as to drivers see and know that bikers are allowed to. Be in that location and that they need to share the road for that. Um, in this particular figure, if I recall correctly, the June tenth meeting, these were discussed as being. Uh, potentially provided, um, at that time, there was not the green rectangle that is sometimes provided. Um, often, you normally see them in more urban areas. Um, my comment for this was. We are definitely okay with shared pavement markings. Um. I personally have the preference of making sure that. Any use of typical traffic markings is common throughout the town, and I'm aware that the town uses shared pavement markings other locations. But without the green rectangle. Um. So I'm not necessarily saying don't have the green rectangle, but keep in mind that any maintenance will be done by the town and would likely only. Refresh, um, upon the maintenance schedule, uh, the markings unless that policy is changed by the town. Um, the third was three sets of rumble strips. Um, and there was a little bit of discussion, um, between emails about the concerns, uh, with town staff for this. This was, um. In my opinion, this is. It's a method of traffic calming that would be atypical for normal locations. And there are a few items that I would be concerned with, particularly when it comes to freezing. Um, conditions, if there's any difference in materials that can cause some frost thaw issues. And create any vertical disturbance, which is usually not great for a bicycle if. So it's, it may slow down, it would certainly slow down vehicles, have the effect for that. Um, but it would be a detriment to bicyclists going over the same area. And also, uh, for consideration, you would not want any rumble strips near curves if. We're looking at freezing temperatures near a narrow road. In a forested area without much recovery space for vehicles, and so I, I would. My recommendation for the town would be to shy away of. Uh, potential liability when it comes to vertical disturbance along that way. Um, and then the fourth was, uh, to speed radar, radar feedback signs, that's also. Getting to be a more common, um, treatment, and it has been found to. Work semi-effectively, there are still some people that will not really care, but there are some people that will. You know, ki- kind of conform to the peer pressure saying, oh, yeah, it's the speed and, you know, I really am going this way, it's a feedback system that. That does show, um, results of general traffic calming. Um, and they propose, at least in this figure, it shows there are those near the longest stretch of road, which would. Typify being the places where speeding would be easiest to happen on a longer stretch of road. So that's something that would be certainly acceptable and welcome for, um, the roadway for traffic calming.
Thank you.
This, next question?
Yes, Laura.
One more shown, uh, kind of bump out, little, uh, curb.
Yeah, so that, that's the afternoons issue, set of conditions, so we haven't had a chance to review that curb extension. Um. And yeah, yeah, we would want to have a little bit more detail on the layout, I mean, obviously, this is a schematic level, um. I think it's a little difficult to review, um, without. The actual locations of potential, uh, curb extensions and how that would impact traffic. Um, and then, you know, as Doug was mentioning, like the construction materials of the rumble strips, a section view, obviously, I know these are just coming together. Um, but those would be helpful to re- review, uh, for. The long-term sort of performance of these. Uh, traffic calming measures.
Give you a little more time on that one, I think.
Um, a question for Darren and Doug, thank you for the presentation, this is Laura, um, I thought that I saw. A reference in a Weston Sampson memo to a twenty-two foot. Two eleven-foot travel lanes. As being a, um, acceptable condition. Into the width of the lane and what might be, is there, is there a narrower lane that we could consider that would be safe? And possibly allow for pedestrian. Um, a pedestrian road?
Um. I wouldn't say that there is a specific. Minimum requirements, it is a little bit more of how the tech, the location feels about things. Um. Decades ago, the standard was twelve feet wide, and you'll see that currently in highways and usually major roads will have. Twelve-foot wide lanes. Um, some, some jurisdictions are comfortable with having eleven-foot wide lanes. Um, in this particular case. Um. That figure was proposing striping eleven-foot lanes, but then there would be a little bit of shoulder wherever the roadway was wider than twenty-two feet. Um, and that's. Uh, certainly viable, I would not say it would be uncomfortable at all, um, if there was ever curbs. Um, or edge of the roadway restricting completely eleven-foot lanes, it would be a little bit uncomfortable, but it would still be fine. Uh, um, it's something that I've certainly recommended in the past, I've seen ten-foot lanes before. Um. When you get smaller, you do have to worry about some things, uh, such as buses, but you don't have buses going down the road. Um, and depending on your snowplow vehicle, um, there might be some consideration if your. Um, plow, um, it is wider, uh, a particularly wide one. Um, for snow management, um, but in general, I would say lone foot is fine, um, for this situation.
Sarah Creighton, uh, are you? Sarah Creighton?
Um, thank you, so, um, my question was essentially the same. Um, if eleven-foot wide lanes are acceptable. Does that mean acceptable with, to edge of pavement to a curb? Um, if we were to add a sidewalk or, um, and, and to the last comment, uh, we do have. Storage areas with presumably with moving trucks going in and out of that, and a lot of landscape equipment, um, in the current. Uh, Beaver Dam Road, um. Uh, industrial condos there, so, um, the use and I believe cell signaling. Indicated they will have some delivery trucks and, um, larger vehicles, so my question is really what? What's the minimum? Width that you, you know, edge of pavement to edge of pavement or edge of pavement to a curb? If we had a sidewalk, and do we really, can we? Um, and so that's my first question, and the second question is. I understand the sidewalk certainly helps pedestrian safety, but when you narrow down a road to a ten-foot wi- width. Lane or eleven-foot width lane. And cyclists are sharing the road, does that create a, or a, a less safe condition for cyclists?
Thank you for the. Oh, I'm not, just had double check, I wasn't muted, um, thank you for the questions, um. In the case that there are large delivery trucks, um. It would be nice to have a little bit of clarification, but if, if we're talking like UPS trucks and. Sort of delivery vehicles like that, they tend to be somewhat a normal size. Um, as an example, buses tend to be fairly, transit buses tend to be fairly wide. And those, when we do have curves, we do tend to prefer twelve-foot lanes. Um, for the navigation for that, um, in the case that there is a potential sidewalk, I would imagine it would be. An edge of pavement on one side, and then when you get to the sidewalk, you have, um, a curb adjacent to it. Um. In many situations in Massachusetts that I've been part of, uh, twelve foot from the center of the double yellow line. To the edge of the curb has been acceptable in many different jurisdictions for. Um, allowing large vehicle transit through. Um, a roadway, and I will remind that, uh, uh, a standard lane and a highway. Which also supports, you know, large semi-trucks are also. Typically twelve feet wide, and so. It, it is very acceptable to have a twelve-foot lane. Um, and eleven foot, if you're including, um, a striped shoulder. Um, to have there. As far as cyclists, when they're using the roadway, um. You'll generally want to have a cyclist be considered about five feet or six feet wide. And then it's Massachusetts law to have four feet of clearance between the handlebars of the cyclist and any passing vehicles. So you have to consider about ten feet. For a vehicle to pass, if we, if you're concerned about passing, um, bicyclists. Uh, which you would not, there'd be certain areas that you would not be able to pass because it's a double yellow as opposed to a dash stripe because of. Uh, sight distance. Um. But if you're looking at eleven-foot lanes, um, there's not too much difference between. Um, two feet of difference if you're passing somebody, because you already have to be with nearly fully within the other lane in order to pass.
Uh, looks like Sam Gregorio wants to add something at this point. Go ahead, Sam.
Yeah, just, uh, go back to, um, the general thoughts on the lanes and widths. Um, so. Uh, the, the general standard minimum, uh, for a lane, um, is eleven feet for this type of roadway. Uh, again, that doesn't mean you couldn't go less, it just means that you're, you're against standard at that point, and usually would have like a design exception. That has to be, uh, put together for providing something of that, um, just a reminder that at-water is a, is a public way, it's not something like in, in. Even like a neighborhood road, it's carrying the landscaping trucks for our neighbors, the MAC, other commercial developments. Um, and I say that as, um, the, I couldn't find it in his own regulation, but I found it in the, um, the, um. Subdivision regs, uh, for the town, that the minimum street width on those are twenty-two feet. Uh, so that would suggest eleven-foot lanes, no shoulders, and so at this point, going something less than eleven would generally even against what Manchester would typically want to see on their. Uh, streets themselves, um, so. Um, right now, the, the way the graphic is, is shown is for eleven-foot travel lanes, uh, typical for. Uh, a minimum for types of roadways, and we do elevens on a lot of different products, even on arterial roadways, like such as, let's say, School Street. If that was a roadway we were doing to work on, for instance, major work, um, so it's not something that. Doesn't happen actually, uh, quite a bit for that particular, we have the advantage here that because it is just a little wider than that twenty-two. Uh, we do provide ourselves with the ability to have some shoulder. Um, that still goes with it with the edge line, uh, so the edge line is just not really at the edge of the pavement itself. Um, which, um, if you get any kind of cracking or anything like that in the asphalt pavement over time, you know, that, that line goes. When you do that, so providing that little bit of shoulder does help in that sense, um, so beyond that, um, any. And just going down one of the other aspects in terms of, uh, the rumble strips, the reason why those particular rumble strips were, were looked at. Um, is at twofold, one, the town was actually talking themselves about rumble strips and having that as something that we could be. Uh, could provide, so that's where we went with that particular effort, and that type of. Rumble strip was looked at for this particular roadway based on the type of roadway that it is, so there was talk about like longitudinal. Uh, rumble strips, those are the ones that are the entire length of the roadway, something you see, let's say, on the, uh, the shoulder of a freeway. Uh, which are still used on regular roadways too. Uh, the difference here would be is, we're gonna have the bikes up against the edge of the roadway a lot on this roadway, and so we don't want them going over the rumble strips through the entire length. And then second to that is, um, the ones that are the lane base, the ones that were shown in that picture and on the graphic. Oh, they don't have to be that exact width of the lane that we were showing, we can cut them down in that short foot or two on each side, still getting the tire of the wheelbase. Of a typical vehicle, but still allowing the, uh, bicycle to bypass on the side of them without, uh, touching them. Um, so that's where we're going with that, um, the other part about the longitudinal, uh, rumble strips, I believe I brought this up at the last meeting as well is. Uh, where those are usually ti- uh, typically used on wider type roadways with less obstruction. So where the natural reaction of when you hit that is to kind of jerk your wheel, uh, because you think you're falling asleep and running off the shoulder. Uh, so, and that's just not maybe what you're gonna have on at-water, but the natural inkling of when you hit one of those on the freeways, that's why it's happening. Is you're kind of drifting off, you're doing a lane departure until you correct. Uh, the difference between a freeway or a larger roadway is you have area to correct. On at-water, we really don't, uh, that one is not wide, we've all kind of established that, and there's trees on the side of it, all the way along its length, so. The correctable dan- the danger would be is, if, if someone were to do a full correction and try to jerk their wheel to get back in the roadway. Without realizing that they don't even need to, they just do it naturally. Um. There's a chance that you end up off the other side of the road, because there's, the road is not that wide. Um, and then the obstructions on the side of the road are trees and water. Um, without a lot of guardrail. So, that's really the, the idea behind the, the lane-type, uh, rumble strips that we were looking at. Uh, similar, or again, something that you would do approaching a toll booth or approaching a stop control, for instance, on a major roadway. Uh, usually sometimes that there's a, a curve in a roadway, approaching a stop sign of something of a higher speed, you usually actually have a couple rounds of those. To kind of warrant some, because especially when you've been on a long tangent beforehand, because you're not thinking the stop sign's gonna happen. Um, here we do have the added benefit that actually everybody on the roadway is probably gonna know. At-water Avenue is ending X feet away, because there's only so many users on at-water, and they're all people who are probably using it every day. Um. So, yeah, um, beyond that, um, I'm sure there might be more comment related to, uh, the sidewalks, I'll hold that part off until that, when we get there.
Great, thank you, uh, Mary. Little marching question, then a few other questions, are we still debating a sidewalk or no sidewalk? Is that the question? Okay.
I know, I know Mark Resnick is an advocate for the sidewalk.
Okay, so we don't think we'll, we don't know yet, okay, um. And then I guess I would ask cell signaling, kind of what, what's the biggest delivery trucks you see going there, I mean, is it gonna be bigger than what's? Goes to a warehouse or anything? Probably not, right?
There'll be tractor-trailers that go to cell signaling.
Tractor-trailers, okay, um. And I'm sure it has been, I, I, there's so many papers that I forget. Um, have we discussed the water table of that road? I know going over it at certain times, it's flooded. Um. Have we discussed that as part of this? Okay, um, I think we should discuss that, because it floods and or freezes. Um, and then. This is beyond cell signaling, but with at-water being a public road. The town is potentially, um. Proposing an MBTA overlay district up there, which would be residential, so any. Discussions with at-water should be looking at that it's also a res- for residential road, um, not just commercial. Any other questions from the board? Yes, Chris?
So, uh, at the moment, no one uses at-water Amsterdam walking very much. And that's because it's not very conducive to walking.
On occasion, I do see.
You're gonna go for a walk in Manchester, you're not gonna. But that may be because it's not, because it's not physically very conducive to walking.
It's true.
What I'm wondering is, what is this curb about? Why do we need a curb? And can we discuss a, a walkway? That even not only doesn't have a curb, like it's done in a lot of places. And maybe not, it's not even pervious, I know Hamilton and Leonard have. Walking paths along roads that are woodchips. Or is it, I'm not suggesting that, but maybe it's a, a, a more, uh, pervious surface. That could be on the shoulder of the road, next to the wetland, and wouldn't disturb the well and at all, and would allow people to walk. Safely or more safely than right on the road, which they'd have to do now. I'm just throwing it out there as an alternative.
Anyone else on the board?
I, I, I just, I do, I, I like to, what Mary was talking about, when she talked about the water on the road. If, if, it appears the intent is to patch the existing road, correct? Not completely de- up, replace it, create a new, no, it's to patch it. So if we were to do a sidewalk, that would require us to go into extending into the wetlands, and what could require us to also. Put some sort of drainage control on there, because we'd be stopping the flow of water from. To the, I guess would be the south side, when everything be going to the north side. So, I think the question is larger, more, larger than just simple hatching and replacing. Do we, do we? Manchester, we want a new roadway down there to service all these additional needs. I actually didn't think of the MBTA, but if we were to put, we would really need to put a new roadway to service the CST, CST traffic. And additional traffic on there, so, I don't know where it goes, I have a personal opinion, but. I tend to agree with the traffic engineers that, that an eleven-foot wide, wide roadway is the appropriate way. Without a sidewalk or a curb line and then a sidewalk. that, that an 11 foot wide roadway is the appropriate way without a sidewalk or a curb line and then a sidewalk there. But it's just personal opinion, but that's a very good point where I think of that. Drainage control is a big deal on that.
Laura.
Have we looked at, if, if the goal is to have a sidewalk with a vertical curb on one side and the sidewalk can at some extent narrow down to four feet for a certain stretch and still be accessible, considered accessible? What does that get us for lane width?
Sam Gregorio looked at that.
Okay.
And can probably speak to why you concluded that the sidewalk wasn't feasible, Sam.
Yeah, so if, if the, it separates this into two things, if the idea was to eliminate, it's not going to eliminate all, but let's say eliminate the the environmental impact of any environmental permitting. That's basically the idea of keeping the sidewalk within the paved surface that's currently there now. So you're not adding impervious land. With that, four foot absolute minimum on sidewalk width by Pro Wag standards. Half and six inches of curb, so four and a half feet of space dedicated to the pedestrian. And right now, we're at a lot of this, from that first graphic that showed all the widths, we're at a lot of locations. And this isn't effectively a straight, you know, shot on the, on the edge of pavement either. It's kind of going a little bit in and out too. So let's say there's still going to be a little bit, but a lot of that area is now less than 20 feet of roadway remaining. And so that'd be area that's combined for bicycles and vehicles. So we're T C's positioned at that point where we, we would want to see 11 lane, in 11 foot lanes minimum. To not just arch and if, but that's even, again, I talked about Manchester's subdivision regulation for a street or 22 feet minimum. If we're, we would be at about 19 and a half to 19 feet at a lot of the roadway, mixed bicycles and vehicles at that point. And so any, any location where you have cars and start passing each other, people are naturally going to try to, you know, move away from the center line when they do that. And that's where we get the idea of, you know, there's a real good chance, especially with a lot of landscape vehicles are going to be a little wider. Some of them are still going to be, you know, larger truck vehicles. The, the idea of if we're down to like 19 feet on the roadway width, there's going to be potential issues with mirrors and pedestrians on that sidewalk. Just from the natural effect of people wanting to stay away from the center line, especially when another car is passing.
So. I just want to understand, did you say mirrors like the side view mirrors on a truck?
Yeah, or. Even a Ford F-150, which is, you know, still, you know,
Yeah.
Even a half feet wide. And we're talking again about a lot of this location is 19 foot wide roadway now, if there's a sidewalk. So again, anything that provides a, you know, minimum, what, what I would call the minimum need for a roadway width, which is 22, and that's sort of including shoulders yet. That would require, you know, widening out the roadway by two to three feet to do that, which obviously is all now new and impervious land and a con con question, wetland mass DEP question for what needs to happen. And then on top of that, again, there is the, I, I heard earlier, the idea of a side path type sidewalk. If that were to something that we'd, we'd be done, there's, it, would it be something that T E C would design to be against the roadway? There would still need to be some type of buffer now between that side path and the roadway, especially when there's no curbing to be active to protection for the pedestrian. You're just, if we're talking about side path gravel path or whatever it happens to be up against asphalt pavement. You're, it's basically at that point, just pedestrians in the roadway to me. There's no, especially at night, there's no delineation with invisibility to see what's different. So that's where the curbing usually comes in, curbing provides the vertical separation, it provides a bumper against a tire. Unless you're going right, unless you're trying to do it, most cars aren't going to jump a curb unless you are trying to do it. So that's where usually that curbing comes in. And when you do that, we now have the stormwater question. And what do we do with all the stormwater, which now has to be treated? I know the idea came about pitching the roadway back, but now that would be, if that was the idea, now we're sending all the water to the south side without drain, a new drainage system that's adding a whole bunch of new water to a bunch of wetlands on the south side that wasn't actually happening before, which is another, you know, EP, DEP con con and potential issue. So whichever way we go, there's, there's going to be now water resources that are directly affected. If a sidewalk is added in, in order to maintain what I would believe to be the appropriate 22 feet on Atwater Avenue, if that was ever going to happen. Right now, we do have the added benefit, again, there's, there is not a lot of pedestrian traffic. That doesn't mean we have to preclude anything from happening in the future. But the, the recommendations that T E C has provided is to maintain the roadway width in its current form, which gives you the 22 feet of lane traffic plus some extra space for shoulder. So you're not directly off the edge of the roadway from your lane.
Thank you for answering the sidewalk question. I was just trying to get to that link with, so now I understand it's 10 foot or sometimes less. Separately, apart from the sidewalk, there's an issue with surface ponding on the road, maybe entirely unrelated to water table. I, what I've heard is that the, due to the construction traffic on the road, you're not talking about a repair, but you're resurfacing the entire road. Is that right? Or did I not hear that?
No. And, and, and I think that it probably would make sense for, since this is a public way for Chuck Dam from the DPW to weigh in, we haven't heard from him as to what his opinion may be as to the existing conditions, whether he's aware of that bonding.
Right.
And what he thinks about alternatives.
I, I agree because if there is any issue with surface bonding, you know, sometimes resurfacing can address those things with some, you know, the resurfacing can address minor drainage and grading issues at the same time. So I think what's missing here is Chuck Dam looking in all this and giving some advice. It's August, I guess. He's entitled, so maybe, maybe we can table those, although I think Sarah had her hand up.
Sarah Creighton, do you have your hand on?
Yeah, I have to unmute, sorry. Thank you. I think that the other question is we're, we're struggling to understand the best ways to improve Atwater Avenue and what improvements we would like to see on Atwater for the benefit of the town and people who use Atwater. I think the other question is how much of that is the responsibility of cell signaling in this process? And I think there's some responsibility, there's going to be added traffic and added use, significant new use for the road. And the road is not perfect, like many roads in town. But whether the entire improvements to, whether they be you know, stormwater, resurfacing and/or a sidewalk should be the responsibility of self signaling. I think might help us to get, if we could decide that, we might see our way through to the special permit. And then the town may have to address some of the deficiencies on Atwater Avenue. Or maybe cell signaling meets us a portion, you know, zero to 100% of meeting those deficiencies. But I think that is important for this special permit discussion. And I do think Chuck probably is part of that. And then, so I'll leave it at that. Oh, the other part of that is we do have kind of an opportunity perhaps to pick the can down the road a bit in that cell signaling is going to build this project into major phases, phase one and phase two. So one possibility is to address Atwater Avenue with the striping and traffic calming as proposed in phase one, but then ask that a, that this issue be revisited in phase two.
Good point. Sarah, do you have any objection to us not resolving the details of this issue tonight, but hitting this one over to September also? Laura is not going to be able to be here in, on, on August 26th.
Yeah, I think so. I think we're going to need a couple of different proposed motions that we're going to have to vote. And then we may not have agreement, but I think we're going to have to make a decision. That's my, that's my opinion. We're, we may not have full agreement on it. And I think the question is not what is the ideal condition for Atwater Avenue? But what of the ideal or near ideal condition of Atwater Avenue is the responsibility of self signaling in the special permit? That's the issue that to me is before us for in the next month.
Great. I, I, thanks Sarah for what she said. I think that's a great suggestion to whatever we, let's get to agreement on what's within the CST scope with the input from DPW and potentially flag this for, you know, phase two, further improvements, further discussion. I would like to get Chuck and Nate's opinion on the specific as well as Weston Sampson. So I know there's, they're not ready to do that tonight, but on specific, you know, the rumble strips and are they good for bikes? And this curb bump out, which I think starts to change the character of the road from kind of our rural road to feels like it's part of a suburban, you know, cul-de-sac or, or certain development. So what's the kind of, if the sidewalk's not feasible within the scope of what we're doing right now, then what are the best, you know, collection of improvements that sort of preserve the character of the road, but make it safer for bikes and, and slow the traffic and, you know, do everything they can. But then don't take it to like, let's not do too much. Let's not necessarily glom it up with curb extensions and stuff.
So I think we had.
W on the way in on that and Weston Sampson.
Sorry, one other thing, just to throw in from the backcourt here. And that is we had proposed a kind of working group with Mark and I know he's been sick and Gordon and maybe we can actually have a meeting of Gordon, Mark, and I'd be happy to join that to come up with three proposals for the voting for, for the special permit. You know, a phased approach, an all-in approach and a, you know, do nothing approach or something. That's kind of three different phases that we can kind of propose to the board and, and figure out which one has the majority of us for it. So maybe we'll, if that's amenable, we can re, have that working group that Gord, I don't think you ended up meeting, did you Gordon?
I had, I had a discussion with, I had a discussion with you and a discussion with Mark Resnick offline, but that's it.
Right. But let's, let's actually get together and, and maybe come up with three proposals, if that makes sense, or two proposals. And Nate, yeah, that's a good idea. Yep.
Mary. I'm happy to be on that. I, I know Sarah's going to be with a lot of committees, so I'm happy to be on that as well. And you have two residents with their hands up.
I think I just want to get through this and then we'll take comments on self signaling before we move on to September. So we're agreed that we're going to kick the rest of this off until September 9th, is that correct?
Unless, there could be a meeting between now and then, but that doesn't seem practical.
It seems like Laura won't, wouldn't be able to be here on, on.
Yeah, the question for Gordon and the other members of the committee, number six also talks about potential improvements. Is that something that Chuck Dam and others can weigh in on at the same time? Maybe you got, maybe all good and stuff.
I think quite a bit that could be combined in that, Atwater and the traffic flow issues. And I know Mark Resnick has some specific ideas and comments on those.
So that'll be number three, number six, and is there another one?
Number nine.
Number nine, that's just construction. I don't mean just, but it's construction management. It's not a federal permanent. Is there any other comment?
Well, five, I mean, if you want to wrap, it would be.
That's the timing.
Okay, all right. I think that's it then.
Yeah, I, and I do, I do think that Chuck and Nate should weigh in on this. And, and also I, maybe my background is working as a consulting engineer and architect. I love to have the, the professionals also participate in discussions, but we'll have our, our discussion process and see where that goes. Or be more.
You know, you're going to find us if you need it.
I, I do, we'll have nice, clean defined, where are we going to go?
Unless there's an objection from others on the board, I do want to just read into this part of the hearing. The fact that we did receive an analysis from the finance committee. Everyone had to look at that. We don't do seem like we want that tonight if we want to include air control, which is in the special permit. But we want it to be part of the public record of the hearing. And some of the specific conclusions were that their expectation of the total tax revenue was going to exceed the amount projected by the initial review based upon the fact that properties in Manchester are, it says higher fish were with than those in Ipswich. Our review was based on, the conclusion was that the annual tax revenue would be 370,430,000, that's the days life completed in 2027, and 750,900,000, 227,000. And the other thing was the building permit fees, but I think Sarah Creighton had lots of issues on that. And what they thought the fees received by the town during construction would be around 300,000 in both 2026 and 2027. And they, this was one of the conditions that they wanted to have included. The special permit was a third party inspection consultant. I just want to make sure I have a chance for you better than you are. Anything else?
Do the other memos that we got? Are we going to read those in? So we got a inter-office memo.
Remind me.
To Mark Lowsky from Sam Gregorio. And then we got an email. Today. From Darren.
Right. Right, he was talking about that a little bit, right? Everyone should have a chance to look at that too. And then I think we put a public comment we received.
Excuse me, are you done talking about the roadway? Cause I've been waiting.
Just one minute.
Okay, I just didn't know.
No, you're not being ignored, even though I feel like I see that your hands up. We didn't have, oh, the other was the email from Ms. Tom that she already referenced. Did you have anything? But anything else from the board? Sandy's comment, and then there is one or two others. Sandy Rogers, you're up.
Okay, thanks. I just wasn't sure. So I just want to say it's good to hear both Samuel and others speaking about concom a lot. One of the main considerations is the runoff on that road. And I wanted to know if there has been a traffic study done and an estimate in all phases as to the true traffic that this complex is going to create. Not only the amount of employees and cars, the ongoing amount of deliveries, the facilities management, everything else. Is that information available?
In the original traffic study, yes, which is on the planning board, part of the website with the CST tab, should be able to find it there.
And that separates out both phase one and phase two?
I believe so.
Okay, thank you. I think that's very important when determining long-term who's responsible for ensuring that the runoff is taken care of properly on this road because it's pertinent to the town water supply. Thank you. because it's pertinent to the town water supply. Thank you.
Great. Um, Dean, did you have a comment related to self signaling?
Yes, thank you. Um, after hearing the discussion on the, how hard it's gonna be to put a sidewalk on Atwater Ave. Um, as a pedestrian who sometimes has to leave his car at Beaver Dam Road, um, one other solution might be for a pedestrian bridge over one twenty-eight to Mill Street to solve the pedestrian and bike access to the site. Um, those ramps on School Street are getting harder and harder to cross, and that could potentially bypass all that for pedestrian and bicyclists to connect with the town. So it's just another idea. I think the town might be able to get a good grant for that i- if it were, but that would be a potential solution to the, um, sidewalk problem to consider. That's all. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, Mark Resnick, you have your hand up. Mark Resnick?
Uh, oh, that was, um, from earlier. I just wanted to, um, when you were talking about Chuck, um, I met with him last week about this and, um, uh, um, sidewalk issue and, um, he also, uh, talked a little bit about the culvert and, and, um, you know, uh, that uh, Public Works may be able to participate in some of the work, but, uh, again, it's, it's all up for kind of negotiation and permitting and, and to see what, what, um, what can be, be, be done there. So, um, I guess they're still negotiating and discussing the culvert replacement and utilities, so.
So anyone from self signaling wanna address that right now?
I, I don't think there's anything to discuss at this point.
Okay. Anything further, Mark?
No.
Okay.
No.
Um, I think then I'll take a motion to continue the self signaling hearing to September ninth. Seven, just be sure. There a motion?
So will.
Second?
Second.
Who wants in favor? Sarah, sorry. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, Vina. What I really need though is power cord. I forgot to bring one.
Well, I have it.
Does anyone have a household power cord? Mary, do you have a?
Not, not feasible. I, I wanted it.
You just need to wait for Peter to get it on.
Around up there for a while and then we go back down. It was great. I felt young wearing a thirty-five pound pack.
Good idea. I think so. I, I saw one, I think yesterday. I draw and I just see where I do my own drawings, my own projects, I take all, I took the high school, uh, high school drawings and here I took all of them right on the bat.
All right. Onto the Harvard. We get a motion to reopen the hearing. On Morris here and we are. All those in favor, uh, Mary?
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes.
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 Yes. I guess we have, Sarah?
Thumbs up.
We have to do a roll call. Um, we're here. Mary Foley?
Yeah.
Still there.
Sarah Creighton's here.
Here.
Great.
Here.
Um, okay. Um, Byon, is there anything that you want to add? Regarding specifically issues of lighting, uh, rafting, boat washing, fueling, and information that you give to transient voters when they come and tie up at your dock?
Uh, so lighting, I did forward some, um, examples of light to market, those could run to. Uh, I can still have posts, the lights that, uh, it's the conditions say no lights on the coast which would have dark light, dark sky light on them to have, uh, very low, there, there are solar lights that are literally as high as my boot, with lights that shine down onto the dock. A few of those strategically placed. That, as I understand it, the Ock Club uses them. And they do direct the light, what very, just break down it, uh, shoe height so you can see what you're stepping on. Uh, fueling, uh, the town has no plan, no location for fueling. We're actually helping, trying to help, uh, Manchester Marine and, uh, Crocker deal with future issues of licensing and permitting. There's a company that does, uh, does this, takes care of all the permitting, but citing that here on Manchester Marine. About town property, uh, rafting is already the boat regulations. Uh, so it's lighting, rafting, fueling, washing boats. That's, if that's a condition to, to move this forward, then I would say if there's a water ban, certainly, we've done that in the past. Two years ago, we had a drought, we had the water ban, we did not allow people to wash their boats.
With that, I guess I was thinking about the recreational boats.
Right, right. So lots of them don't use freshwater to wash their boats. That's not, not a thing for them. So, right, the re-part recreational boats. If then the water bans were, um, this is kind of the water. If the washing of the boats. I'm not going to argue that.
Uh, Mark Presnick, anything to add? My computer is, guys, like, can't tell if you have.
It might be gone.
Any comments, questions from the board?
I do have one question. So, so Byon, I'm, I'm trying to get a grasp of what, uh, for lack of a better word, a utility, utility pole or stack that would be available for the boats to be tying up.
Oh, no. So, uh, I wish I kept the pictures with me. I did provide that, uh, it's power posts.
So it's power, it's electrical power?
And electrical power and water.
And then water.
And then typically they have lights.
Light, but integral part of the boat.
Little part of the tower. For, for safety on the dock, but.
So you buy this as a unit and you install it and?
Yeah, I'm similar from nine hundred to three thousand dollars depending on how Jedi you want it to be.
Okay, but that is your intent though, right? Just not specified yet. You don't know exactly.
It kinda look like this. Yeah, kinda like that. Yeah, the lights like pretty benign. It's not, it's not too invasive.
But, so here's, actually, and this is the one that we were discussing specifically. It's, it's the slimmer uh, version. Yeah, that's like the utility pole. It does have the hose hanger on it, which I am not in favor of.
Oh, there.
Yeah.
How tall is that?
Uh, these are tip, this one here is thirty-six inches long, three feet.
How, what's the frequency on the? Uh, what's the spacing?
Right, so, um, I was thinking every four, uh, I was thinking four to five of these. For the idea being that the new five hundred feet would accommodate largely, um, or any overnighters would be accommodated down on that end. So, uh, we would have power posts down on that end. Down towards the drawbridge. There's been some discussion about whether or not we would have one up near the lamp for the staff to have access to, or if we, we had a specific overnighter that can in that spot. So, four or five.
Let's have one more person still. I was having dinner last night with my very boat crazy people, mind me, they travel, they live down South Shore, they travel everywhere. All of them. They were up here, as a matter of fact, a couple weeks ago. But they, they said to me, said, how are you dealing with trash when boats, when they, when they pull up there? Just drop off their trash. How do they, how do you do that?
So, uh, actually, uh, they've been using the trash barrels up the, but there's not a lot right now. You imagine small kitchen bag going up into the trash barrel and you park. That's, there's been no overflow issue with trash at any time.
If you had five hundred feet of dock, I imagine.
More overnighters, I would probably direct them over to dumpster, commercial fishing.
Oh, made around over. I was told that the boulders just dropped the trash anywhere. You know, they're in there.
So we've had, so I would say over the five years, we probably had two voters who just have keep their bags out onto the dock and flee to the, to my staff and I come over and said, no, 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 that's, that's not how we do it, they should, uh, should dispose of them probably.
I took a trip down, uh, over the weekend. I went there in the morning and then went in the afternoon just to see, I talked to the staff and he, there was very few people there in the morning, probably like nine thirty, ten o'clock. And, but I went back at the end of the day and then the, the pool all the way up to it. And it was boats circling around, waiting, waiting someone to leave. That's right, we pull in. So there's definitely a, definitely a need to be used for.
So before those docks went in, it was many boats circling around. The fishermen's pier being completely overwhelmed, the fish and stock, you know, the boats. So now, uh, some folks might have to wait and get a minute's first spot. It's, it's fast. It used to be busy in the morning when there was breakfast in the restaurant. Oh, yeah, yeah. Breakfast. We haven't got everyone a lot. That morning, probably, it's been stopped. So we don't want to open breakfast.
Maybe a floating breakfast place.
Can you give us a brief, I've asked for it multiple times, not from you, but, um, uh, the, we've never gotten the Concom decision. Um, you said that there was the condition of orders and I've just never seen it.
I.
I've asked and asked, I've emailed, but.
Oh, we, we had provided that order conditions, um, I think after the second meeting. We, we can send it again though.
That would be great. Can you send it to the mainboard members?
We'll send it to Mark and he can, did you send it to Mark or?
Send it to Gail, send it to Gail. I mean, she can afford it.
We, we have sent it to Gail. We'll, we'll, uh, we, we will forward that again. Yep.
What, isn't that part of the, sorry for interrupting, isn't it part of the application, the bound application?
To be clear, so we, uh, we've received the order conditions for, um, the Fisherman's Facility for the Morris Project. Not for Reed. Reed, we just got the certificate, um, EPR certificate, so we haven't filed with conservation yet. But the Morris order conditions, which we have received, we've, um, provided to Gail.
Okay, and so, and then you'll be going for Reed to Concom?
Yes, yeah, definitely.
And then just my other question was, um, Ben, were you able to get any more firmer numbers on the water and electricity rate?
That would be impossible for me to project. The, the idea of water and electricity, uh, it's an upcharge. The town would charge more money to be at the dock. Usage, I absolutely have no ability to project. No.
Are there consultants that can do that to say, okay, if we expand with, you know, twenty-two docks and wat-, you know, water and electricity? Cause I'm just trying to get a clear financial picture. I just don't have a.
So, so if, if we had slips, uh, where, um, we knew we could accommodate forty-foot boats, three forty-foot boats, two thirty-foot boats. But we don't. So what we have is just linear space. We could have one, two, we could have four sixty-foot boats show up. Or we could have eight thirty-foot boats show up. So without having any, and we don't, we don't have any metric. We don't have water and electricity available to voters. So I don't have any data that I could use to project out.
Right. Isn't it going to be possible, we do, when we do this, we do this, to, you'll get built on a monthly basis, water and electricity. So you'll get a really quick sense of what the expenditure is.
Right, so I, I would assume that everything would be metered so we'd know what is being used.
And if it's, if it's way above what we are anticipating, you can adjust.
You can adjust the rate. That's what you do.
That's the beauty of the app, right? It's a really quick solution.
I can edit, I can edit, I can edit right now the amount that we charge at the dock and it would be in place for tomorrow. That's, that's how we see this.
So is it one meter? I mean, I'm sorry, my ignorance, is it one meter for the?
So I don't know about Massachusetts, but it may, you can't resell electricity. So we aren't selling electricity. We're selling dock space, uh, X number of feet, uh, per day. So if we look at our water use and electric use and see that the fee isn't high enough to cover that, all of the related expenses, or it cuts into what we're expected to be generating, then we can adjust that fee upward. And it could be on a scale. It's gonna be very slow in May. Building in June through mid-September and then cycling back down.
It can be like Uber.
It can be like Uber, by, you know, it can be, uh, Vivian.
Generally, you don't do that, you set your, uh, perfect fee, and that's, that's how we need this to work.
So, and then one water meter?
Right, one, one meter, uh, one electric meter. The post would not be metered. We would know specific usage for a specific boat, we know. Daily, we wanted to do it that way, or weekly, or monthly. Not for the rest. Two hands up up there, Sue.
Um, Sarah. Sarah Creighton.
Hi, um. Are. Do we have a final can, uh, draft conditions, or are we working off those from last meeting? That's my. And then I have two other comments.
I, when I spoke with Mark shortly before the meeting started, he said he had, uh, drafted conditions on Reed Park, but not from one pier. And he was going to send them to me, so I left my house, I haven't seen them yet. Uh, Mark, I don't think you're still there.
He's, I think he's off at this point.
Uh, so he has done a draft for Reed Park, and assuming that he's got it, we'll send it to everyone, we'll certainly have it. Um, everyone will have it within the next couple of days. Um, and then he'll have Morse Pier done, he said, in the next few days. So.
Okay, so then. So then, um, we probably can't vote this tonight if we don't have final conditions. Um. So then I have two, uh, additional, um, conditions that maybe we can pass to Mark. Um, the first is, I think, this discussion of electricity and water is a good one. Um, and I think we should have a condition that the electricity and water is metered. So it can be charged, now we'll let the town administrator and the town, um. Charge to the, to this expense account, that maybe to facilitate that, um, or some language to that effect, and then the. Um, and the other question or, or comment on conditions. Uh, that did not come up again tonight is that, Byon, I think you had said you would be willing to get rid of the finger dock that is perpendicular to the main dock. Um, approximately where the harbor, um. Master boat is docked right now, um, is that still, uh. Consistent with what you're willing, you, you find, feel it's acceptable? Okay, it would be helpful to, for tho- folks to just detail that with some language, the, or, or give us the plan, revised plan that reflects that. Um, and also, um, to give us language that is specific to the lights. Um, that the, that the illumination will be, um, you know. Flush mounted or, or, or essentially, you know, no more than two inches above the deck, or whatever it is going to be. Um, and that the utility poles are going to be of, you know, approximately this, this many of them at this, uh, height. Because I think otherwise we're. We're kind of a little bit in the dark on that, I'm literally in the dark right now. I'm sitting outside. So I, a couple of things there was, it sounds like the dock is, uh, that little piece of dock is off the table. If we could get both to detail the, um, lights. In, in a written document that says this is what's going to happen, and then my suggestion, uh, or discussion among others is meter the electricity and the water.
And maybe what I'll, I'll follow up with Mark Resnick when he's feeling better, is include, he can take a, a first cut at that kind of thing, and then buy him. And review it, um, see if it fits the concern.
So can I just ask one question, because we received a lot of documents over the last day or two, and I may be getting them confused, but there were letters from residents, and I think there was one on this.
There is.
Fiscal impact.
There is, yes, we had a, we had an email from Lorraine Yovan, um, regarding this, yes, thank you for that.
And I, I just thought, and that she made some good points about, um. Residents' interest in. Seeing that if it's possible.
Can I interject, Sue?
Yes.
Um, I asked Sarah Melish about this question, um, and she said that the, um, FinCom did, uh, discuss these, um. Projects back when the grants were being applied for, so perhaps we can ask her to summarize their discussions.
Great idea.
And I think if we can repost them or something on the website, that might be helpful too.
Actually, can I, I'm going to amend that, Byon, can you connect with her and get a, uh, um, through and with Mark, just to coordinate that since I'm away? Great, thank you.
The difference was choosing the select word.
You can't hear speak up?
I can do that. Uh, the, the, this email addresses, um. The Select Board. And the Select Board, uh, has heard all of the, the same detail of what detail, and voted to move this forward. And actually came to the last planning board meeting and spoke in support. Three members, so I think the Select Board. Would. I, I'm not going to speak to them, but I think they've done their due diligence, you know, received the. Information that they need to be comfortable that. It's feasible and that this facility will not cost the voters of this town. Certainly, uh. The Reed Park project is a hundred percent funded by. Two grants, there's, there's no waterway funds, there's no tax dollars, there's no town dollars being spent on that project. Of the one point one six five million dollar. Destin for that project, none of it's coming to town.
So what, I, I think the way, the way I read that letter, and I could be wrong, was that, because the Select Board doesn't do the financial analysis, they had just come up with a governance policy that all projects. Look at that, which we have in our bylaw anyway, so we as a board need to do that for special permit.
Anything else from the board? On Reed Park, Morse Pier.
Laura. I was just going to say that on the conditions, I mean, I think we've heard some questions, we've got a number of letters of the board, so. I think it would be good to kind of collect those as part of the documentation of the project. I recall, Byon, you saying that the commercial fisherman community supported this, I, I just don't remember if that was one of the letters. Yeah, the letter, okay, so I think it would be useful to kind of collect that with.
That was for to.
Yep, you got that.
I do remember that now, yeah, thanks for dragging my memory, and then if the Select Board has, has the Select Board, you said they voted to.
Yes.
Move the power?
Yep, sure.
Yes, um, so I think that's part of the, you know, documentation, and then the conditions may want to say that it's. It's a little bit of a chicken and the egg, but it's also dependent on receiving this second order of conditions from the Concom. And that they would, um, that they would pass it. And I think that together would, uh, what Sarah Melish could provide. You know, provides a lot of background, I see that's got his hand up too, so he's, so DPW might have something to add, but those are the ones that come to mind as, you know, kind of points of reference. And I'm in favor of the lower light, not the vertical standing element, but the lower. Now to kind of flush mounted or per mounted.
However, if we did it that way, you'd still have to have your utility pole for your water and your.
Right.
Yeah, it's just fewer vertical elements kind of in the fusion.
So the way, they, they all come with lights, so they all have the dark skies, but as we discussed, the clouds, I mean, we just would not have the bulbs. This is that, it would be the separate. Lower unit. Spacing to, to make sure it's safe, we don't want anyone to trip.
No.
I agree, if there's a certain minimum foot candle that needs to be, or average foot candle that needs to be met, then that should be met.
Uh, great, did you want to add something? Great.
I'll just, yeah, I'll just kind of thank you, I was just going to follow up on, um, Select Board's review and the finances there. They did review the, the numbers that I think Byon has also presented to you, um, and feel very comfortable that the transit docks in particular will be a net revenue gain. Um, fairly significantly, um, in the hundred and forty, hundred and fifty thousand dollar range as a net. Gain to the town as a conservative number, um, and that those dollars then can, um, certainly be a, a strong source of funding for future. Um, harbor projects from dredging to float repairs, um, et cetera. So they did review those numbers and they felt comfortable with them, and that the, um, they are quite, um, convinced that this is a, from a, from a financial perspective. Uh, a net positive for the town.
Uh, DPW. Been waiting a while.
Next, yeah, uh, so I just wanted to jump back to the utilities portion, um, so for a water meter, we would only install one meter, uh, as a master meter. And then I would assume would be the same for electric, um, I guess to get into the numbers, we can make some kind of small assumptions, I think Byon previously said that. Uh, having utilities, we could charge, go from charging three dollars a foot to five dollars a foot. So, you know, assuming, you know, you get a twenty-five-foot boat in there, that's essentially a fifty-dollar difference, uh, for each night. Uh, that a boat is staying, uh, that is tied to the utilities. The town charges seven dollars and twenty-one cents per hundred cubic feet of water, uh, used, which is, uh, seven hundred and forty-eight gallons. Um, so I think we can pretty confidently say that, um, you know, water usage is going to be inconsequential to, uh, you know, that rate and eating into any of that profit. Um, electric, you know, I'm guessing is going to be a bit, a bit higher, not knowing exactly how much, you know, boats use if a, you know, a larger boat comes in and is using air conditioning or the like that. You know, they're using, you know, even call it ten to twenty kilowatt hours, you know. The rate we have from National Grid, I think, is on the range of like twenty-five to thirty cents per kilowatt hour. So again, we're only really talking about potentially, you know, five to ten dollars of electric, um, you know, per boat. Uh, on a given night, when we're potentially charging, you know, fifty dollars more just having those utilities on site.
Thanks, sweetie.
Yes, thank you.
Six dollars. I placed this charge a heck of a lot.
Yes, they do.
I know my friend said, this is really cheap, you did, did your dock, why, this is really expensive, you come here.
So the, the potential is there for that facility to, so. As always, I point out, this is a great need for this harbor to self-sustaining. Not be a burden on the taxpayers, which it, it was thirteen years ago, to stop being, uh. A harbor that. Has the highest, some of the highest mooring fees in the state, they were the highest for a while, it's the highest in the state, eating up on the voters here. Money being generated from boats from away. To help maintain. And keep this harbor, our harbor. And without this. What's the plan? To go back to raising mooring rates, to going to taxpayers who like to spend so much money on things like T-Test and schools and communities. Seems like, uh, a pretty great way for the harbor to be self-funded.
Thank you, Sarah Creighton, did you want to?
I have two other, uh. Um, I think that one of the things that is a good thing for potential small boaters in town is the inside, the. Use of the inside of the stock for small boats, and I'm wondering, um. If there's a. Kind of a mooring list, I mean, I don't want to micromanage how this gets used, but are there any conditions that we should be thinking about, I guess, for the, um. Inside, you know, the shallow side of the stock. Um. I do think that that is a benefit to people who want to have a small boat, is that they will have plenty of, um, tie-up space, but, um. Are there any conditions that should be applied to that and? I may, uh, I, I don't have a specific, um, condition, um, and then the other is, um. Again, I'm not sure that's a special permit condition, but I, we've talked about the fact that when there's a big blow in. You know, a, a, you know, tropical storm Debbie, that, um. Waring holders, particularly from the outer areas, maybe should be able to tie up to the stock and not have it be a transient dock, is that? Uh, I'm not sure that the, either of those are. Special permit conditions, but rather harbor master policy, so I just want us to think about whether they should be conditions in some way, or.
So.
Byon, maybe Byon, you have some specific thoughts?
Yeah, those, those are both absolutely relevant, and in practice. Uh, the two hundred and fifty feet we have down there now is already used for Area Seven. Boaters, uh, in the event of a storm, that's, that's been practiced, and we haven't charged, uh, we have not tried to take financial advantage of, uh. You know, boats that could be trouble, and that would be the continued practice, and obviously five hundred feet will get us a lot more of those general seven boaters safely. I think that. That's something that the HAC should put forward, when the rules and regulations change. What do you think, Chris?
Yeah, good idea.
So Chris, Chris is on the harbor advisory.
Yeah.
Uh, and then as far as the, uh. The idea of maybe taking advantage of that space on the inside of the dock, I, I agree with Sarah a hundred percent, we can look at, uh. Right now, we have a maximum length of twelve for boats tying up at ten docks. Uh, I think there's an opportunity there that we could offer something for boats thirteen, fifteen feet as well. That would be another harbor advisory, uh, committee thing. Number two, this isn't built yet, and just like the current docks, it's going to figure itself out, we, we do rent space to. People with twelve-foot inflatables are boats now, we don't have a mooring. There's room enough so that we've been able to do that for two hundred dollars a season, to get a place to tie up their dinghy. If we could expand that to boats thirteen, fifteen feet, and that would also take some of the burden off those folks who might be waiting for a mooring. Who might prefer something, uh, the dock instead, so that would be a benefit as well. So.
So just to close that out, I think you're, sorry to Sue to jump in, but, um, I think you're arguing that that's a policy matter, not a special permit condition.
Yeah, I think I am.
Okay, I think I agree with you.
For the harbor advisory.
So unless there's anything else, I think that our plan will be, assuming Mark starts feeling better, um, that we'll all see some draft special conditions. Um, for both of these projects within the next week or so, so we should have plenty of time to review them before our September meeting. And we should be able to make a decision then. That's sound doable.
You have a couple of hands up.
Since my computer's dying, um, who, who?
Somebody just went down, but Sandy Rogers.
Anybody else?
Somebody else?
I was the other person.
I was the other person. Gail.
Gail, you're still on? Oh, good. Um, of course you're still on.
I'm always here. You can't get rid of me.
I'm sorry.
I was.
You're up again. Sandy Rogers?
Hi, hi. Um, I thought you were saying Gail, so sorry.
Sorry.
Um, I just have a question, and I don't know if this is part of what goes to the CONCON for Reed Park or what you need to consider, but. Um, is there any work that needs to be done to Reed Park to get the utilities to the dock? And any considerations regarding that, the safety of the utilities because of what Sarah mentioned regarding. Um, poor uh weather conditions, um, you know, s- special treatments that need to be done. Um, especially with electricity, et cetera. Um, has that been looked at?
So, yeah, the last meeting uh in particular, it uh was agreed that the tree warden would be part of. Uh, the process getting the utilities from the street down to the pier to ensure that uh. None of the foliage or beautiful trees were impacted negatively by this, so. Absolutely, uh, there will be somewhere uh in the park getting those utilities across to the pier. As far as.
Part of what's covered in the grant?
Yes, yeah, absolutely, that's.
And maintenance over like, you know, whatever period of time needs to be considered in the budget for all this?
Right, so maintenance is uh part of what we will cover with the revenue, and actually, uh, the projected revenue from Morse Pier. Is almost double what our budget is right now for the caro floats and piers in town, so. Uh, there'll be more than enough revenue to ensure that these facilities remain tip-top first-class places like they are now.
And once, um, I, I, I just wanna reiterate, just with any, any project, I think that we should have updated. Um specs, we should have a view. I know you weren't given the budget, but I'm just, as a citizen, I think it's very important. That we have this. It sounds like we're not only having pilings, we're also adding. Extra poles for the utilities, for the water, for the lighting, and all this kind. I, I, I truly think that's important also. Um, there are rules and regulations in Massachusetts around docks. I'm certain you'll have the right people that are installing something like this. But when I was hearing um the select board talking about making it a walkway and everything. Um, the pitch at low tide is well beyond what is acceptable. Um, by regulations, and then when you start to think about the length of the dock, who's going to be overseeing overseeing the safety of citizens? That are um walking on it, that are maybe you're talking about adding benches and sitting and sitting up higher, and. I think that all of that needs to be looked at very carefully before anything like this is a. Is approved, yet let alone have it in front of the town citizens to decide. Thank you.
Uh, Mary or Peter, can you tell me if there's anybody else?
There isn't. No.
Should we close the hearing?
I would love to have a motion to close this hearing and continue it to September ninth.
We're gonna close it or we're gonna continue?
Or we're gonna continue it, thank you, to September ninth at, let's say, eight o'clock.
Um, hello, this is Dean. I have a comment, but I'm not sure if I should say it now or wait till the public comment se- section of the agenda. But it is regarding this project.
Okay, now's the time.
Okay, well, um. I found a plan um from the town hall that showed the, the outline of the work, and I had a comment earlier at an earlier meeting about. The um historic impact and the, the visual of this um. And what I've decided, what I've looked at from this is to consider. Removing section, everything from section BB to FF. That, you know, section BB can stay, we'll add a finger dock for the fishermen. But to remove that seventy-foot section of Reed Park and put it at the other end along the railroad tracks. Um, that would go a long way towards minimizing the impact of our scenic harbor and still have some growth for, for the town. Uh, dock space. Um, so that, that was the, the, the um idea that I had. So for considering, thank you.
Thank you. Is that possible?
So, uh, the configuration as proposed, as presented, is most beneficial. Uh, we're fronting railroad tracks and a waste treatment plant. We're not fronting. Homes, businesses, which. Still benefit from this.
By, which, which section I don't have.
So Reed Park, those down along the railroad tracks and to the drop bridge. The other section, the Morse Pier, comes around from Morse Pier along the dredge line that was done in twenty seventeen and eighteen. Around to Reed Park with fingers that will accommodate six to seven lobster. So there actually, you, you folks should have received, you were afforded a uh. Simple uh rendering of, of what this would look like.
I, I can show this on screen if I can just get permission to share.
Unfortunately, I think the capacity for that.
Do you plug on his square? Um, I get host-disabled participant screen share.
So, uh.
Kind of visualize what he's saying.
But so, we're removing part of the fisherman's facility and then putting it down on the other end.
Coming down here and then we make, we make the turn and then we make the turn to where you are now. He wants to add it further down.
If I understand correctly, remove that, most of that, put it down on the other end, but the other end is already taken up. The fisherman needs to be next to their facility. The history of the town. I, 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 I personally don't think that moving the fisherman from their home. Is beneficial. They've been there for centuries.
We were adding a fishing dock for the, a, a finger dock for the fishermen, so that there'd be two instead of the one that's there now. So that expands their facility, and you can move your facility away. It was a mistake to kind of put it towards the road like that. And block the view from, from Beach Street. Um, this, what I'm suggesting would open up so that we could have our scenic harbor view and not um all this commercial. Boating stuff in our residential town. Um. I'm just trying to be less reckless with our harbor. It, it's a beautiful harbor, and I hate to see it exploited this way.
Uh, I don't, I don't think it's an exploitation to ensure that the commercial entity. That's been in that part of the harbor, that specific part of the harbor for centuries.
That's why we're improving it. We're adding a finger dock.
Here was built in nineteen sixty-nine with private money by a gentleman who wanted to ensure the fisherman of this community. At a home going forward.
I support that. I wholly support that. I support that. I support that.
At the head of a harbor, the part of the harbor where they have always been, it's not detrimental.
The public totally supports the commercial fishermen. We do not support.
I, I, I have to, I have to, no, I have to cut you off. Um.
I know, I know you do. I know, I get it, but I just wanna make one point that the public completely supports the commercial fishermen in the town a hundred percent. We just are having trouble embracing adding docks that don't support the town, don't support the residents. Don't support moorings and are just for a three-month tourist season, which is not going to help the town in general. Thank you, Sue.
Thank you. Byan, one more response.
So I would encourage uh all the folks who come and have questions and comments. To come and speak to me in my office, to look at the plans, to. Try to give the harbor department the opportunity to share the rationale now. Why bring this to the harbor department, department to bring forward for the benefit of the town. So I'm seeing, nobody ever comes.
Don't take it personally.
I don't take it personally, but it's, it is disappointing. A lot of commenting in meetings, but nobody comes to ask the questions before.
I do.
Credit to Mary, gold star.
Well, I didn't want that.
Mary does.
I thought this was the venue where we were supposed to give our opinions, but.
Me too. I would love to meet with you, Mr. Byon.
Anytime.
Name the date. I would love to sit down and talk about the harbor. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. All right, now, uh, a motion to continue this hearing to September ninth. At eight P M.
So moved.
All those in favor? Sarah?
Yep.
Great. And I guess we have to do a roll call again. Uh, Mary Foley?
Yes.
Do I? Yes. I don't think I do. Sorry.
Cheers, September ninth.
Sorry. Um, okay, we just have a few more things to um. So Chris, did you wanna quickly talk about MBTA?
Yes, I think Mark was going to do it, but since he's not here, I'll try to fill issues on this. So Mark has been able to get a grant from MHP to pay for the propensity for development study. In the MBTA districts. Uh, we don't know when the study will be ready. We're hoping for the end of September. Um, we also asked the K G for a date for, they could do as a feasibility, the impact study for economic impact on the town. And they said they could have it done by November first.
November first.
So we said. Maybe as an alternative, we could get the FINCOM to do the economic feasibility analysis. And the benefit of that, there are two benefits. One is it could get it done very quickly theoretically. And secondly, it wouldn't be some third-party consultant from Boston or somewhere. It would be us, the town, doing it. So, um, one of the things that might be a useful vote would be to authorize uh Sarah.
Melish.
Well, authorize Sarah Creighton to request the economic feasibility study from the FINCOM.
And can I ask you something about that? So has the FINCOM been um approached yet?
So I've talked to Sarah Melish about it, and she says that she'd be happy to do it, so. So can I make that motion to authorize Sarah to? Make a request to the FINCOM to do this economic feasibility analysis?
Which means that we won't ask for the independent consultant. And we think that. By having FINCOM do it, it provides the. Data that residents have been requesting.
Yes.
And will be received in a credible way, ma- likely more so than an independent consultant.
And in enough time for people to consider.
Will it be, will it provide the objectivity of it if people want? Yeah. If we do it ourselves.
What data points are we asking for?
What data points?
Yeah, so what, what, what is, what is the um analysis gonna show that FINCOM's?
Uh, basically, it's gonna show what the impact on both cost of services that the town would incur. Including school versus uh increased tax revenue from the units that might be built.
And that would be the same data that we'd receive from an independent consultant? I'm, I don't know.
Yes, 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 that's what it, that's what the study would do.
So we're essentially getting the same study that we would.
I think it would be probably a shorter because it's, it's being done by a bunch of town volunteers, but I think we. Uh, I think, you know, they did this for uh the forty-B project.
S L B.
Yeah.
Yeah, the S L B. Uh, and they did it for the um, for the cell signaling project.
Well, that, I think that's an evolution, right? Cause we can't wait till November first.
No.
That's not new to me.
And I should, I, I wanna say one other thing about this. Uh, Mark talked to Emily about this, and apparently, uh. There, there are a couple of problems going on at once. One is every consultant in the state is working on these feasibility studies. The second thing is, is that the state has received something like, I'm not gonna be the exact right numbers, but something like fifty. Uh, free um submittal requests for a review, as we did. And sixty-five completed town meeting votes. So they've got a hundred and ten as of two weeks ago, a hundred and ten roughly. Maybe more, but it's a lot. I mean, that's, so that's, the question is whether, whether we're gonna, where's the state in terms of their review and how they're gonna do it? So there may be extensions provided, who knows? We don't know what's gonna happen.
So, uh, we, can we finish the conversation about the, who we want to, to do this thing?
Sure, yeah.
Cause I'd like to ask a question about what you just said, cause that's kinda scary.
Well, it's probably scarier for the state than for us.
Well, yeah, sure, yeah.
Yes.
You said something, something was gonna be available in September with another consultant? I heard November and September.
So September would be for the propensity for development, which would tell us. What the estimate would be for actual units to be built every year for that.
Two different studies, the financial impact is.
The financial one has to depend. Well, you can't do the financial one until you've got the propensity.
Yeah, I, right.
Right, so we're gonna do that with the consultant.
Yes.
That we have planned, cause we got a grant for it, so we're gonna start that, and we'll have that by September, whatever.
Thirty, did you say?
Yeah.
Did you say, Chris, is that what they told you?
Uh, I don't know. Uh, I'm not gonna be held to a date, I don't know.
Okay, so we get that in, and then the FINCOM does their analysis of.
Yes, so of course, the FINCOM doesn't have to wait until we get the actual.
Right.
Study to begin, they could start thinking about how many students would be, are you, you know, do it all in a per unit basis.
Yeah, and in terms of the deliverable that we would get if we went to a consultant, and there, I can understand they're busy right now, cause everybody's trying to do this. Do we know what those criteria are that they'd be looking at and, and what, you know, metrics they would use?
One of the things actually Sarah Melish asked for was an example of a.
That's what I think we need. Cause if we could get an example, and then the FINCOM could model their calculations on that, then we know we're apples to apples.
Well, we can use the um, the Needham, was it Needham?
Yes.
I mean, there are some.
There are some there.
That comes, they're on their town website.
So if you've already, if the task force has already pulled a couple of those, and you can meet with the FINCOM and talk about their methods and the deliverable. And I think that would help to get a little confidence in the product. No, no, no shade on the FINCOM, but just, you know, wanting to make sure that we're gonna do in the same type of analysis.
Yeah, I would just have a concern in that we um try to look at multiple avenues because September is when FINCOM ramps up their budget season. Um, so I question if they actually have the bandwidth to do this, but um. That would be one concern that I would have.
Um, any suggestions? Um any suggestions?
Well, my suggestion is that we would have asked for this six months ago when we were talking about it, but um I think I mean, if our town planners reached out to all of the companies he can think of that does these analysis and they're all busy, I mean, I I guess I don't have any other suggestions, but I don't know the answer to that, but.
Other than tapping into, is it Emily? Is that our consultant's name? Just to have her help as as much as she can.
Yes, sure.
She's probably completed some, right, that she might let us?
She doesn't do economic visa or impact analysis, but her the partner friend does. It's who we asked to do it and that's what they said they'd have it done by November.
And she would know what is required of the study.
Yeah, sure, she'll, I'm sure she will. So is everybody okay with?
Should we vote on it? We probably shouldn't vote on it.
Yeah, I made a motion.
Is there a second?
Second, okay.
All in favor?
So is the motion just to ask the Pincon?
Yes or no?
Yes. Yes.
Scary, Sarah. Where are you, Sarah? You look like a, that's a horror movie.
No, and I actually I'm gonna sign off um and I'm gonna say goodnight, cause um my batteries are just about gone. Thank you.
So wait, sorry, Chris, you started talking about the timetable around.
Oh, so so I I guess there's some lack of facts. We don't know when the state's gonna do our review. We know they are reviewing over a hundred uh submissions.
So if they, and I don't know whether this is, it's late, forget it, I probably talked about this later.
Good suggestion.
Are there any liaison committee report? Are the management plan advisory groups?
They've come and gone.
Yeah.
No.
Um A H P.
Uh nothing on that brand.
And we've already covered MBTA task force. I did send everybody a memo of dates to just stick in your calendar temporarily for public outreach, informational um events that we schedule.
When did you send that? You said you sent that to?
Yeah, I think it was in the packet. Here, you can have this one.
No, thanks.
One thing, there, we're hoping to have a joint meeting with the task force on March twenty second. I don't know.
March?
So August twenty second, a week from Thursday. I don't know, is are people available?
Be just curious, was that intended to be a public hearing or just a?
No, just a meeting.
So can we do it virtually?
Sure, oh yeah, of course. Yep. Okay, I'll just, we'll just have a meeting.
We have minutes to approve.
Thank you. Um any other public comment? Okay, uh approval of minutes, July ninth.
I'm losing any approves.
All in favor? Any other matters not anticipated? How about a motion to adjourn? All in favor?